Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for this Monday, April 21st. And would ask all of you who have cell phones to maybe put them on silent or vibrate so that we are not disturbed as we work. Roll call, please.
Wesson.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Putner.
Here.
Samuelson.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item three, the mayor's report, I have a couple of items. The first one is to say thank you and let you all know that Freya, the dog who was lost, that provides a wonderful community service of care with the, with the police department, was, has been found. So we were going to ask everybody to try to look for the dog, but moments ago, literally, and you can see how cute this animal is, but anyway, has been found and in good condition. So we're grateful for that. The next item is a proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the world, and whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Minot, North Dakota, has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting practices, now therefore do I, Mark Janser, acting mayor of Minot, North Dakota, hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in Minot, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So we will deliver this to the, to the Park District. And I'm also asked to note that the Parks are having a contest going this week, which is to count all the trees in Oak Park. And there's a wonderful prize for the winner. I don't know what the prize is, but I'm sure it's wonderful. Moving on. By way of one other item for the mayor's report, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna note that as the legislature is in the final days of its session and with conference committees ongoing, we're particularly watching Bill 1020, which is the bill related to money through the Water Resources Department for our flood protection. Coming out of the House, that, that bill had $125 million associated with it. The Senate version has somewhat in the neighborhood of $66 million, and the reason for that was because of some updated projections that, that the legislature got during about the time of crossover. So the conference committee is, is going to be meeting and sorting that out. We went to Bismarck and met with the governor and the Senate Majority Leader, along with Dave Ashley and Ryan Ackerman from, from the Searcyler Joint Board, and presented our case and provided some additional information subsequent to those meetings, and so we'll see where that's gonna go, but it will, it will have a significant effect on the amount of construction that gets done in the next biennium, so more to follow on that. Moving on then to the additional reports, the city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did include, as always, a memo in the packet. Be happy to stand for any questions if there are any of council at this time. Not seeing or hearing any, I'd like to have Dave, our finance director, come up and give a monthly finance presentation.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I go through a little bit of a presentation outlining some of the changes we anticipate for the upcoming budget process and how it differs from what we're used to in the last few years, to give you a little bit of an oversight on what to expect and where we're at so far and exactly how the process will work.
I wonder if Jennifer pulled it up? You might have the clicker.
There we go. Okay, we'll walk through this pretty quickly, again, just outlining some of the reasoning behind the, the change of the process. Obviously, the budgeting process is one of the preeminent planning tools that we use as a municipal government. It allows us to plan for operations in the upcoming year and well into the future, both operational accounts and capital investments that we take throughout the city as well. Part of this process will be setting service priorities, and that's where the rubber kind of meets the road. At what level of funding are we going to fund the government, and what level of service do we expect for the funding that we are getting from our taxpayer dollars? And then part of this process is also being accountable to the taxpayers to ensure that they're getting the best value for their tax dollar. So some challenges in traditional budgeting methods, transparency is an issue. A lot of this work is done by staff and their staff, so there's several levels of administration through this. A lot of this work is done in a series of meetings that the public doesn't see that action going on. And the city of Minot has taken a concerted effort in the last number of years to offer budget workshops and those types of things to get that information out into the public eye and to invite public involvement in the budgeting process, and that's something that's been ongoing for a number of years, but that is also a challenge in traditional budgeting methodology. And one of the biggest challenges, and we still deal with this here in Minot, is reliance on historical data. So traditionally, we look backward at what we have spent in the past, and then we try to extrapolate that data into a projection for the future and based on some type of driver like inflation or growth factor or something like that. And one of the challenges that we, we encounter with that is that that's always not the best predictor of what we need in the future for resources, and it also promotes utilizing all of the budget that you have available to yourself at this point, because if we don't spend our existing budget, that means that we, in the future, we're likely not going to get a growth factor on top of what we didn't spend, so it encourages folks to spend whatever is in their budget, and that becomes a challenge when we look at the sustainability of the budget over time. So the need for a new budget process, and we have gone through a number of iterations in how we approach the budget, and with varying degrees of effectiveness, I would argue that some of them are very ineffective and inefficient, so this year, we're taking a little bit different approach on how we attack the budget. And part of this is, again, getting the involvement of the council and some guidance upfront, a little bit different approach to how we communicate that information, trying to gain some efficiency without going back in this iterative process where we come with a somewhat inflated budget, and then we go through a series of reductions, and we play, let's make a deal behind closed doors to kind of come up with a budget that is even close to what the council expects, and then we have the council take their shot at reducing that budget, too. So I think the thought process here is to get the, to get the guidance from the council upfront, deliver a product that we think is as close to that expectation as possible, and then we have the, the back and forth with the city council to fine tune what that product is. The last part of this is being responsive to the needs. Again, we do a number of things to, to find out what's important to the community, the satisfaction survey, those types of questionnaires that are, that are out there to determine what's important and what should be a priority in our budget, so then we utilize that information to craft a budget that responds to that, that level of service that is expected. Some key principles of the upcoming budget process, accessible budget information, so this is a little bit different tool that we're going to be utilizing. I didn't bring my budget booklet up here, but our budget book is not that big. If we provide all of the detail that we anticipate being in the budget tools that we're going to utilize, that budget booklet would be a big, huge binder. So we are going to try to utilize some different tools and some technology to put these different budget projections out onto the internet so they'll be accessible. The council will have access to them in an electronic format so they can drill down into the details and see what's in there. So that's one step that we think will be a step up for us as far as being accessible into the meat and potatoes of the budget. Fostering accountability, just by changing this and having it out in the light of day, it should be a more transparent process, which should foster accountability amongst all of the staff and officials, and then, of course, building trust with the residents, and that's something that's extremely important as we go through this process. So stakeholder engagement, we're working on some different discussions in the past. We've done budget tours with council members, and those have been open to the public. We're looking at different ways that we can tackle that this year. We've, we haven't completely narrowed it down, but we're talking about maybe presentations or video production with our PIO staff, those types of endeavors. So if somebody isn't able to make it to a meeting, they're available, they can go back and renew, review them on demand, so it, again, is expanding that, the availability of that information to more people. Enhancing budget effectiveness, again, figuring out what is the priority for the community as a whole, and then, again, crafting the budget around those priorities and engaging residents to make sure that we're hitting all the marks. So data making, data-driven decision-making, utilizing data in the, in the budget process. I know at the last council meeting, we were given some direction on some scenarios that the council wanted us to bring forward. I'll tell you that my budget for '26, I've been working on it over the weekend, and for my department to get to a flat budget for 2026, there's some pain involved with that, and to get to a 3% cut is going to greatly impact the operations of my department. But I think that is a necessary endeavor that we go through so that we can call out exactly what that would look like. If we are going to do a 3% cut, this is how I, I think I can get there, and this will be the impacts to my department. And then we can look at these departments across the city as a whole, and we can measure what's important, what can we live without, and what do we really need to keep, and where do we need to focus our attention? So part of this process, after we get all this information and identify these trends and these pain points, we should be able to more efficiently allocate resources, and at the end of the day, efficiency is what's going to get us to a more reasonable budget. And then also measuring impact. As we go through this, there's going to be some things that we're going to think, you know, in today's world, we can, we can live without that, but as we defer things, sometimes that comes at a greater cost down the road. So part of the process that we're going to have to implement here is measuring impacts of, of the decisions that we make today and how it's going to impact us in the future. So this is just going to be a little bit of a step-by-step walk through the process really quickly. The first goal that our department heads will do is they're going to develop a budget that will be a flat projection over the 2025 original budget, and they're going to have to do a three-year projection, so they'll prepare a budget for 2026, '27, and '28. '27 will have a 3% increase over '26, and '28 will have a 3% increase over 2027. So these are overall budgets. We have already built in assumptions for the items listed in the table, including salaries, the health benefits, the disability, payroll taxes, insurance, and utilities. So those are just a guess, or best estimate at this point where those will be, but we have to have a starting point so we can get working on these budgets. Department heads will be required to provide detail for each object code, which is a line item. So for example, if I have my travel budget, I would have to line out every item that I think I would spend or have allocated resources for in that travel budget. So this is very difficult to see because it's way too small. What I was trying to illustrate here is the data that we will be able to extract from our ERP system once that flat budget is, is generated. We can, we can extract this into Excel. All of the detail will come forward, so then you can manipulate this file to generate your scenario where it's a 3% decrease or a 3% increase, and the verbiage should be there, the line item detail should be there, you just have to modify it instead of recreating it. So it's an effort to help make this process go by more efficiently. We can take the spreadsheet and then upload it back into the ERP system so that they don't have to re-enter all of that data. So once we get the initial budget projection completed, we will export that into Excel. The department heads will come up with their 3% under and 3% over scenario with the same guidelines from the original budget, the flat scenario, and then we'll be able to upload those back into Munis, and then you'll be able to see the differences, and we should be able to compare between the projections, what the differences are, and highlight those differences. So again, same process with the plus 3%. So we're hoping that by calling out some of these impacts, it's going to be able to, to allow us to make more accurate or better informed decisions throughout the process, because part of the, the process that we're going to go through here is going to be to document what the impacts are. And I'll, I'll bring up my spreadsheet that I was working on over the weekend just to show you as an example of some of the impacts that will be in the budget and how we have to call them out. And then, again, prioritizing community needs. When we get the operating budgets done, we still have capital needs that we have to address, too, and what's going to be important, but you, we have to get the operating budgets figured out so we know what we have available to find, finance our capital needs as well. So as we get down the path, we'll come with the presentation of the draft budget. Hopefully, it is what the council was looking for, or at least a reasonable facsimile thereof, and then we'll start having the dialogue with the council on where we proceed from that. There may be things that get added back in because it's a priority or priority with, for the community, and there may be some things that we'll make decisions that we'll say we're gonna, going to postpone that, or we're not going to do those projects at all. So that'll be part of the dialogue back and forth with the city council, and hopefully by going through this process, we should have the information that's readily available that if something is cut from the budget, the impact should already be cut out in the document. So as far as the operating budget goes, it should be a pretty straightforward process that we go through, what the implications of those actions will be. And then as we make through revisions of the preliminary budget, of course, then we have to approve the initial preliminary budget, and then we go through the process with the public hearings and, again, the community impact input. All right, once we get everything approved, go through the formal budget process, and again, this is just some dialogue of why that's important. We need to have the council on board with where we're at with the budget. We need to make sure that it is what is representative of the community and this council as a whole, and it should be legitimate. It should be that, there shouldn't be any surprises of what's in the budget from this group or the public. Once we get through the approval process, that's just the beginning part of this, then we have to continue to monitor and administer that budget as we go throughout the year or two, and it, making sure that we are living up to those promises that we made or those assumptions that we made, and if not, if we can't live up to what we decided was going to happen in the budget, we need to have a, a very good, reasonable explanation for why that's not taking place, and there's always going to be things that are going to be unforeseen that we have to accommodate or, or deal with. Again, the importance of the monitoring is making sure that we're sticking to the plan, identifying deviations. You know, COVID was a good example of that in the middle of the year or very early in the year. We had something that was completely not on anybody's radar when the budget was developed, and we had to make a lot of decisions on what we're going to do to mitigate the impacts, and we had no idea what to expect. And in hindsight, some of those decisions we made probably weren't the right decision to be made. We, we postponed some capital projects that were on the books for some time and in planning, and, you know, we, again, we didn't know, and at the time, that seemed like probably the path of least resistance to make sure that we were protected as a city, and it ended up costing us a bunch of money due to inflationary pressures. So going back, would I say that we would change that decision? Maybe not, but it's just an example of how we have to be able to adjust as we go through the budget process. So again, on a highlight here, inclusive budgeting process is transparent, holding people accountable and being accountable for our budgets, and not only the upcoming budgets, but also the budgets that we're currently under today. We need to meet the community needs and the expectations for the service levels, and we have to instill trust in our financial management and our budgeting process and how we go through that process. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to go through this really quickly. This is going to be, I keep using the word interesting, and that's not the right word, but I don't, I don't know what the correct word is. This is going to be a process that is hopefully going to be enlightening for a lot of people and, and maybe shed some light on some of the process that we go through to come up with this budget every year. Mr. President, take any questions, if there are any?
Any questions from the council? Don't see any.
Either that was really good or really bad if there's no questions.
We're gonna go with really good, finance director. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item five, which is a public hearing. This is a public hearing related to the CDBG entitlement process, and is there anyone who would like to speak to this issue? Anyone who would want to speak to the plan of action for the CDBG entitlement process? Chris, do you want to come up and give us a little synopsis, quick, like?
Mr. President, members of the council, CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant Program. It's a program that's been around since 1974. It does provide funding for low to moderate individuals, income individuals. So each year, the city of Minot has, since 2023, the city of Minot has been designated as an entitlement community. We will receive an annual allocation, and that allocation needs to be split up between public services and rehab and reconstruction for low to moderate income individual, excuse me, individuals. We have not received our 2025 allocation, however, we have been instructed by the government to proceed with the, the process, and that process is to have public hearings, which will be scheduled over the next two to three weeks, and develop an action plan to submit for the 2025 funding. 2025 funding is expected to be announced either the 25th, but I have heard it could be pushed back till the middle of May. be pushed back till the middle of May.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and proceed with the recommendation of the city staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion?
The motion passed unanimously.
Moving on then to item six, which is consent items. There are 17 items. I've been asked to pull 6.14. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the remaining items.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
That takes us to item 6.14 in consent agenda. This is the item related to auction services, requested use of a city employee-owned auction service. Alderman Blessam, I believe you pulled this.
And I'll move approval.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Moving seconded.
And just, you know, I'll try to do this every single time we have this come up because I think it's important for the public to know when we are using a city employee for a service. It may be the exact right decision, but I think it's important to be clear.
Sure. If I remember correctly, I think this was the only bidder who was able to provide onsite service and conduct a live auction. So there was some rationale for the recommendation. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
That takes us to section seven. And the first item is the Shirley Court Street Lighting Discussion. What are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve alternative two, that the city pays all of it.
A second.
Moving seconded for alternative two. Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can continue four.
Thank you. I'd just like to speak in favor of fully funding the streetlights at Shirley Court, alternative two, and not placing any of the cost on the residents through special assessment. As a city, I feel like we've been doing this wrong in the past, and I think it's time to start fixing that. Here's a couple of the reasons why. First, this isn't a new amenity or a luxury. It's basic city infrastructure that's deteriorated beyond repair. These lights have been in place for almost a century, if I'm not mistaken from the staff's memo. The city owns them, the city's maintained them, replacing them is a matter of public safety and basic service. I don't think it's fair to just put it on six households. Second, a portion of this was already budgeted in the 2025 budget. We have the resources in place. The total cost is like $112,000. But if you look, of that $112,000, almost $23,000 of it is fees from the city for us having to special assess them. So the real cost to the city is only about $82,000. Assessing $6,000 per household for a failing system the city is responsible for just doesn't sit right with me. And then third, this is a trust issue in my mind. Residents have already paid their taxes that are meant to cover the maintenance and replacement of city infrastructure. Asking them to pay again through special assessment essentially for something that's clearly the city's responsibility erodes that trust. Fully funding this replacement shows that we take basic service seriously, and we're willing to stand behind the commitments those taxes are supposed to be used to fund. So for those reasons, I'll support the full cost of this project through reserves and moving forward without assessments.
Further discussion. Alderman Blessam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I agree with Alderman Fuller on most of that. The one part that does give me a little bit of heartburn is that we've had recent situations where we've done differently. You know, the most recent one that I remember was before my time on council, but where we went into a flood ravaged area near Leech Park, I believe, and did some special assessing through that area. Now, my vote may have been different on that one. I may have gone this exact same direction. But I think that what this does is it sort of speaks to that agreement that we have with those homeowners, that they're paying for this over time. And they're not going to be asked to pick up the tab at the last moment. You know, I think that you can draw a little bit of a distinction. We have had other places where we're going back into an area, let's say, where sidewalks weren't done because of ordinance at the time, or lighting systems were not in place because the ordinance didn't replace them in a development. You know, I think those we can look at differently if we choose. I think we can decide that we want to still continue to do specials through those. I'm of the opinion on this one that aging infrastructure, again, about a century old, is the city's responsibility and the community as a whole to provide that safety net. So I'll be voting yes on alternative two as well.
All right, seeing none, it's time to vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. Moving on, 7.2 is the Property Tax Exemption Resolution for Childcare Centers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that we open a public hearing on this, as I know there's some folks from the churches here that would like to speak to us.
Second.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, or can we just do it?
No, if the chair would like to, they can open the floor for public comment.
All right. Do we want a motion on the item first?
Oh, on the item?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the resolution that's on the agenda. And then what we'll do here is open the floor if there are folks who want to speak to this issue. And I know there's been a lot of discussion in the community about the previous action that was taken. I would certainly then invite you to come up and address the council. I would ask, however, that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes if possible. And also that if things get repetitive, if you would try to come with something that somebody else hasn't already said, maybe say, you know, I agree with the other points that have been made, but here's something additional for you to consider. So does anybody like to come up and visit about this? And if you could, please give us your name so we can, we know who you are.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Steve Oster. I've born and raised here in Minot, and for the past 22 years, I've served in our local church, striving every day to help love the herd out of our community. Tonight, I come before you deeply concerned about the potential consequences of taxing daycares and preschools facilities housed within 501(c)(3) organizations. There's potential for numerous disastrous impacts. Some centers will be forced to close. Those that remain open will have to substantially raise their rates to cover this new expense they've never had before. This will force families to make decisions. Do we take one of our family members out of the workforce because it's cheaper and more fiscally responsible to stay home than to pay for another increase in childcare? With an already critical workforce shortage in Minot, this decision could cause long-term damage to our community. Businesses may hesitate to even invest here in Minot because of the declining workforce, and this would exacerbate that problem. But beyond the immediate financial impact, there's a deeper, more personal story, one of love for our community. For over 50 years, our church has housed a preschool. And for the first time in over 50 years, tax exemption is being questioned. We charge this center, along with the daycare in our center, just enough to cover and maintain the cost of the wear and tear on the building, cover the utilities and maintain the cost of wear and tear on the building. We don't do this for profit. We do this to serve our city because we love Minot. In 2004, our church recognized the growing need for hunger and in those who are homeless and poverty in our city. So we asked the question, how can we help? And we started serving meals. At the end of 2024, we had served 115,511 meals to love our community. During the historic flood of 2011, we opened our doors for volunteers from around the nation to come and help rebuild our city. We also went to work feeding those in evacuation centers. We served 36,427 meals to those in evacuation centers and those rebuilding their homes because we love our city. We've agreed to be a Ward County, to serve as an emergency evacuation center for Ward County. When Minot Public Schools needed to house a school, we answered the call. We opened our door. We let the school in. As recently as three years ago, there's a situation where a school had a potential of closing for a month to fix a water break. And we said, yes, we'll make that work because we love Minot. In 2018, we had a daycare that was about ready to close its doors in our city because it could no longer afford rent. So we opened our doors, and we said, we're going to charge you enough to cover the utilities and to the wear and tear on the building because, again, we love Minot. When Project B closed, we went to work working with other charitable organizations to ensure our city had immediate shelter for people. And we opened our doors to a diaper pantry for six months because we love Minot. We continue to provide spaces for things like Al-Anon, AA, Overeaters Anonymous, and many other organizations because we believe in investing in our community. So you may ask, why does this matter? Does any of this matter? And a lot of those things sound like they're very charitable donations that won't come into play. However, for the last 50 years, we've had a charitable donation in our building with a preschool and now a daycare as well. Then now we have to start questioning everything. So my biggest fear for us as a local church and for churches in our community is whenever we've seen a need arise, the question has always been, how can we help? And if this goes through, I think the first question we're going to ask is can we afford to help? How will this affect us long term? So tonight, I'm asking you to vote on behalf of our churches, our families, and our community, showing your support for families and children of Minot, supporting the organizations that go to work every single day to help love our city. I'm asking you to please do what I see as the right thing. Vote in favor of families, in favor of churches, and in favor of our future. Thank you for your time.
We're looking for anyone else who wants to speak to this issue.
I would hope to be allowed to speak on other issues too if I speak here, but I noticed something right away that didn't sound right when he spoke up, and that's the idea that there's somehow a worker shortage in this city. They've started out with, I guess they've come up with a new term to describe jobs that are advertised, but where nobody gets hired. In general, for those of us who sought jobs, we'll go in and we'll see these jobs, the job listings posted, and find out that they haven't had an opening in six months. So that person that came up before me that's talking about a worker shortage, there is no worker shortage. Most of these jobs just don't exist. And if there's a worker issue, it mostly has to do with housing. I do agree that widows like my mother should be able to get childcare if they're forced to work. And so should any other single parent, whether she's a divorcee or basically done stuff that might have been considered scandalous in my mother's day. But the myth that there is somehow a worker shortage is not something pleasant to hear for most of us who basically are struggling because we can't get adequate wages or good working conditions or anything else because we know at any point in time, there's going to be a dozen applications for our jobs. And I just wanted to go ahead and clarify that one. And I do want to commend that person for whatever charity he did. But when my friends who are homeless were looking for a place to stay, there was no shelter that took intact families or even the parents and the children individually. So it's just something that I'm wondering, personal observations that I've seen firsthand that I wanted to bring up here. And thank you for your time and patience.
Hello, sir.
Andrew Sudbrink. I brought with me the good book of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Now, I'm not going to read you any scripture out of here like the people that shut down the strip clubs or made a fuss about the flag or our state reps do when they go to Bismarck. But I am going to read you some facts, go a different route. And that's my property taxes. Far more scary than this. Okay? I don't live in a big mansion on the bluffs overlooking the city. You know, not a member of the country club. My wife works as a CNA. I work in the oil field. And we pay our taxes. And I expect everyone else in this city to do it too. We'd never been on EBT, TANF, SNAP, housing assistance. We had kids. When the bills were high, we just worked more hours like everyone else. I would move that you vote against this and make them pay their taxes just like everyone else. Someone's got to.
Hello, sir.
Hello. My name is Larry Mall. I'm the pastor of the West Minot Church of God. We also house ABC Childcare Center, which in a couple of years will be celebrating 50 years in our community of serving the children. I would like to speak in favor of this resolution. I have a unique perspective on this topic. Last year, we lost our daycare director because she went and took a job that could offer benefits that we could not offer to her. I can't fault her for that. I can't fault anyone for trying to better their family. But what it did, it put us in a position to where I had to step in as the temporary daycare director. They were able to qualify me through the state, which I promise you, when I moved here in 2021, I had no intention of being a daycare director. I came here to pastor the church. But because of that, it put us in a predicament. The state of North Dakota has very stringent and somewhat difficult requirements, particular requirements, in order to fill the role of a daycare director, as it should, because we want someone qualified overseeing the children that we're watching in our daycares. But because of that, many of those who are willing to fill that role cannot be qualified for it. It's difficult to compete also to hire employees that can work in the job paying more per hour and take less responsibility and less training than it takes to be a childcare provider. Each childcare provider has to go through a certain number of hours of training even to be in that position. And because of the margins that we have in childcare, we can't pay a competitive wage or struggle to get to that place. The point has been raised that everyone is struggling to find employees. And while I grant that may be true, if McDonald's can't hire enough people and one of them has to close, there are plenty of other places in town for us to go eat. If a gas station can't hire enough employees, they may have to limit the number of hours they're open, but there are plenty of gas stations. If we have to close daycares because we can't compete for employees because of the cost to do that, we create an even larger hole in our community where the need for childcare is already great. It's suggested in the newspaper article that came out in the Minot Daily on April 8th that this is an issue best suited for the free market for an entrepreneur to come in and to fulfill that. If as an entrepreneur, I were looking for a place to start a business and make money, daycare is the last place that I would look because the margins are so small. They're very small, and truthfully, one of the greatest areas of need that we have in childcare is for infant spaces. Now, infant spaces in the room are hard to afford because you don't make any money in a daycare with that. The ratio for an infant is one teacher to four, and that's probably too many. But that's where it's at, and that barely covers the cost of employee, let alone any of the overhead for a daycare business. But that's the area that we receive the most calls for, is our infant spots. So the greatest area of need is a place that a daycare cannot even make money realistically. It only serves as a feeder for the older classes as those children grow to where the margins allow for any profit to be made. And while exempting childcare facilities from property tax would not completely fix this, the question asked was where would this even make a difference? One potential area is our ability to open additional spots for infant spaces to meet the demand in our community. Well, it may not seem like a significant What may not seem like a significant amount of money in daycare, every dollar counts. Offering this exemption will allow for for-profit and not-for-profit daycares that little extra that can help make the difference in staying open. It may provide enough of an incentive for new providers to open up. As I look at the document that was provided with the different amounts that may be assessed for, uh, uh, valuations and tax amounts, I see estimated tax amounts in here that I feel would not allow daycares to absorb that expense and cause the closing of daycares creating an even larger hole in our community. While the, uh, conversations, I believe many of those daycares could be exempted, this resolution will allow daycare centers the opportunity to make sure that they meet the necessary requirements for individual exemption and will provide the data that I believe is being sought. Alderman Pittman, when you brought this back and put the, the termination date is the 29th, to give us an opportunity to look at this and see if it makes sense to continue this. I'm all in favor of that, but I think this would give us the opportunity to be able to make sure we have all our ducks in a row and make sure that daycares are not having to close because of unintended consequences. Uh, I feel like giving us the next four years to, to review the data and see what it looks like and be prepared for that is in the best interest, not only of the daycares, but in our community as well. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on this issue?
Hi, my name is Sarah Say, and I actually own two childcare centers in Minot. I've been doing daycare since, um, 2008 in the city of Minot. I opened my own daycare once I had my own child. The reason why I decided to pursue childcare is because I felt like there was not enough options for somewhere safe for my child to go. I now have three children, um, who are now old. Um, and I stayed in the childcare field because I loved what I was doing. I loved making a difference in children's lives. And when I started, I just started out in my home and I eventually grew to open one center and then made it into two. And it was really important to me seeing the impact that I can make every single day um, in the children's lives. And now some of the kids that I started out in daycare are now graduating high school. Um, they're onto college and they're, to be able to see the positive impact from day one to now, um, is a very rewarding experience. And I can tell you that it's because of the support that I've had, um, throughout the years from the city of Minot, like our state licensers and, um, programs like Childcare Aware of North Dakota that have been able to help me grow as a person, to be able to grow my business or grow the childcare centers, to be able to impact more children throughout the years, going from, you know, a couple handful of kids to, you know, 150 kids. So I'm addressing you to see, to ask for support on this issue because if we do not, if we make this harder on the childcare centers in Minot, it's going to impact our community negatively. It's going to impact those children. It's going to impact those families. Um, you know, right away, it's going to negatively impact the churches or the places where the childcare centers are. Then it's going to go on to the owners of the businesses. Then it's going to go on to the businesses and the businesses, especially, uh, I speak for my business, if we're attacked with a $15,000 bill in an annual year, I know that we are not prepared to take that on. Had we, you know, take time and prepare for it over the course of a couple of years, maybe we can adjust and dissolve that, but we would not be prepared to take that bill on. So we're faced with, do we close or do we find a solution? A solution that has been suggested is putting it on our families. Right now, the daycare center that I'm speaking of, we have 43 children enrolled. Thirty-six of those families qualified for the North Dakota Childcare Assistance Program. That means that they are low income. And for me to look at that and say, okay, I need to take this $15,000 and I need to pass it on to 36 of our families, 43 children, 36 families, that is a big burden to try to pass on to them. And I really don't think it's fair. Um, based on the last city council, uh, meeting, we were talking about it would be $13,000 that the city of Minot would be missing out on. Um, I know there's a lot of numbers floating around there, so I don't know what's accurate and I don't know what it's not. But I want you to think of it as we're taking that $13,000 that the city of Minot was previously collecting and if steadying, instead of putting that $13,000 on, well, it would be much more that the city would collect if we did not pass the exemption. So we're either asking for a business like me to put $15,000 passing along to 36 families or $13,000 passing it along to, I'm just guessing, 10,000 households in Minot. We're talking about a dollar increase possibly for the city of Minot versus $800 increase to each of our families and possibly even more. Um, I feel like, um, the state of North Dakota put this in their century code for a reason. They gave, they're giving us the opportunity to have a heart and giving childcare centers across the state because they know there's a shortage to have a little bit of, um, relief and kickback. And they have decided, the, the state of North Dakota decided to put it in your hands instead of making it across the state, um, across the board. So I'm asking you to please consider passing along this exemption. I think giving us four years, um, to see if it's helping and works, um, is a great idea, and I think that's a great compromise. Um, we didn't have much of a notice that this was coming about. I actually had no idea that this was going to be, um, talked about or else I would have been here at the last meeting. Um, but I do want to thank Mark and Lisa for supporting us the last time we voted. And I want to thank, uh, Rob Fuller, I think you're the one who put it back on us, put it back on the agenda to talk tonight. So I really do appreciate that and I hope that you guys would really reconsider voting in favor of letting this exemption pass and then we can reevaluate in 2029.
Is there anyone who has something more to add? Please come forward.
Um, basically, I don't know what else to, I mean, I guess I should have stepped forward a little less quickly, but I knew a family was homeless and it's interesting that that shelter was never, I mean, that they never talked about that shelter and I could never find that with that first speaker. And, um, I just noticed that there's a lot of parents that are forced to work because they have no other choice due to low income. How would this tax exemption be passed on and would there be any requirements for them to take low income? Would there be any, uh, or would this just be passed on so these daycares could charge what they wanted?
Ma'am, I believe you wanted to speak.
My name's Edana, Edana Kitzman, and I, I got a question. We can have a great big toy box up on the hill. Parents pay to have their kids go in there and learn stuff and play. We have parks and recreation for fun, but when they go to a daycare, they learn reading, writing, numbers, ABCs, maybe even Spanish, and all sorts of things before they're in their first grade. Why can't we support that education rather than just the fun time on how to play? That's it.
Okay, is there anybody else who hasn't spoken who would like to, uh, address the council on this? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing portion of this, uh, uh, item and, um, bring it back to the council. Um, we have a motion and a second, I believe. And, uh, the motion is to approve the, um, uh, the item. And so, um, uh, discussion. Paul.
Thank you, Mark. Again, so after the last city council meeting, well, I think, uh, I probably got more feedback on, on this item than, than most items in my time on council. So that's why I actually asked staff and directed staff to bring this back as a new resolution rather than trying to bring it from the floor. I thought we maybe could find a compromise. Um, and again, I agree that, that, that four-year period, um, is, is kind of where I'm at. We, we do this with other programs, whether it be to incentivize investment or development. You know, Renaissance Zone is one thing that comes to mind. We forego property taxes to get people to invest, whether it be in their own businesses or, or properties or commercial properties, um, even residential properties in some cases. Um, and, and there was some discussion last meeting on, you know, if we, if we forego some property taxes and, and, and a, and a business owner, and I think it was Rob, you had mentioned that, you, you, and you said, I'll give you a scenario because I live it every day. I own a building that a day, that a daycare is in. I pay $5,400 a year in property tax in that building in our lease. I make, I make them pay $48,000 per year, which is a pretty good lease. What does that mean to take $5,000 out of them and I actually reduce the rent as the property owner? And again, my thought is I don't think a whole lot. I don't think that 5,000 bucks is going to reduce the cost of daycare in the community. But I think there's a difference between availability and accessibility and affordability in this scenario. And again, I think if we can incentivize individuals, maybe the tenant in your space that's renting a space, or maybe someone has a home daycare and can invest in a commercial property and forego this property expense, um, and this expense of property taxes in the first four years, maybe this is something that they can get into, that they can take a crack at and, and invest, um, not only in their business, but in our community. And, and again, maybe we let this program run and we track its progress. That's something that we, we like to, we like to, uh, talk about in our economic development committee meetings is where are the metrics? How can we measure the success of this program? This is clearly one that we can measure the success of. We'll have the applications come in this year and then from, from here on out, we'll be able to track any new applications that come into the, come into the city through the city assessor's office. Um, so, so again, I think this is a golden opportunity without overcommitting to, to the previous exemption of, of in perpetuity. Um, and we can revisit this in four years. The council, the body will potentially be completely different. They can, they can either continue this, this, this program or they can repeal it. But it gives, it gives individuals, um, the opportunity to, to look at a curriculum of something that was identified, right? Uh, and I've thought about the possibility of this program, you know, running for four years and it doesn't have the desired outcomes. We don't have this, this influx of, of, uh, daycares in our community. But maybe that allows the existing care centers and childcare centers to implement curriculums to still maintain a nonprofit status. You know, and maybe, maybe the, the unintended consequence of that is maybe our children that attend these programs and, and have that, that early education program accessible to them. Maybe they're more prepared for kindergarten. We, we, we raise our test scores. I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to think of the glass half full. I'm trying to find a compromise. So that's why I ask for this to be reconsidered in this form.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman, bless him.
Okay, so I'll, I want to start with a, a couple of questions, first of all. So for the city attorney and Ryan, if you don't mind coming up. So I want to clarify, first of all, as, as I mentioned last, in last meeting on this, there are two completely different issues going on at the same time here. The first one has to do with what we've heard tonight is, is the churches who actually have this going on in their buildings today and the fact that we found something in the law that we believe was being misapplied and we have to fix. That's, that's the way that that works. So I want to make sure that we're all have the clarification of what, um, what that looks like, number one. And then number two, I believe that there is a, an exemption, let's say, and I think Alderman Pittman was, was alluding to this a little bit, an exemption that would allow that situation because we're inside of a building owned by a nonprofit today, that would allow even a for-profit entity to, to hold on to that tax exempt status for property tax purposes and allow that to be passed through to the owner of the building. So I want to make sure we have that clarified and understand what that would actually mean and how that would work.
President Janzer, Alderman, bless him. Uh, in discussions with the city attorney last week in verification of how North Dakota Century Code, uh, subsection eight for charitable properties is outlined, uh, there's a couple case laws that we reviewed on the matter and in determining exemption eligibility for properties operating, businesses, for-profit businesses or nonprofit businesses operating within a property owned by a charitable organization, there's two, two, uh, I guess, uh, tests that you have to apply. First one is, is the property owned by a charitable organization? Majority of the scenarios is as an easy yes. They're owned by religious organizations. They fought, they file and qualify for a 501(c)(3) status and charitable organization. They're defined under law. Stefan, you can fill in here maybe. And the second test is, is the use of that leased space, whether it be for profit or not, whether or not the, the property owners operating in the black or operating in the red, is the use of that space charitable? Um, we get into then the determination of what is charitable. Uh, North Dakota Century Code has a couple of definitions. IRS, the 501(c)(3) exemption status has a couple of definitions and I believe visiting with the city attorney and a lot, a handful of our daycare providers that are operating in these facilities, they'll meet the requirement for that based under, uh, providing educational or scientific benefit, benefits to, to the, um, ultimately to the, um, the daycare facility, the operations going on there. Um, but in conversations with a couple of these property owners, there are a handful that don't currently. And so that's, that's where we're at, that we would be under that review, um, obviously working with the city attorney, have to determine whether or not there's another charitable aspect to the property that could, could, excuse me, could continue the exemption status for the property. If not, then unfortunately I'm forced to place a valuation of the area that is leased out, not the entire property. I know there's been some misinterpretation of that, but the area that is actually leased out by the, by the tenants.
If I can continue. So, so in your, in your opinion and, and the city attorney's opinion as well, so we had Pastor Steve speaking first, um, from Cornerstone up. As I listened to him to describe exactly what's going on within the church and, and the space that they're providing for early, you know, early childcare as well as a preschool, I, I found no doubt in my mind that they meet the criteria that, that the city assessor just laid out. And for me, if that's the case, this, this becomes a much different question once we've resolved those questions. Then we have to get into the other discussion, which is, are there certain types of business that reach a certain pedestal where we need to give that level of tax break in order for that to work for them? That's a different question and we can debate that in a moment. But this question is related directly to the churches that have this going on right now or other charitable owners of, of buildings and whether those will be deemed to be taxable in the first place. My contention, based on what's been described and what our discussions, is that they will not. They will meet the criteria and those that may not meet them today have a clear path to get to meeting the criteria.
President Janzer, Alderman, bless him. The second part of your question there, the, the second application, that I believe that is best fit for council to determine applicability there. Uh, ultimately, if we have an application in our, in our, uh, review of the properties, we'll be requesting that information from the property owners as we do every other tax exemption to verify and provide documentation to support their tax exemption. If for any reason, um, myself working with our attorney's office feel that that does not meet a charitable use, ultimately that's going to be brought to the council for their determination. You as the city council are the ultimate taxing authority for the city. You decide what is tax exempt or what is not tax exempt. Um, if a property owner files an application, files an application for tax exemption, my office does not, denies it based off evidence we have or the facts we have, there is avenues for property owners to appeal that through the abatement process, ultimately through the city council, county commission, and onto district court. So, um, my job as a city assessor is to vet those applications as they come through. Uh, if there's any gray areas, is absolutely working with our legal counsel and the, and the, and the city council as a whole to determine whether or not that exemption status is going to be grounded to the property.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm finished with Ryan. If others have questions for him, that's fine. Otherwise, I would continue.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Uh, Ryan, last week when we met and sat down before we went over and, and talked with the church officials, some of the other things you had mentioned, um, to me, and I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. Uh, charitable giving, if the daycares within those facilities have in their lease that they may forgive or can forgive, um, monthly payments, if a, if a family can't pay, that's considered charitable giving, correct? And that would, that would cause them to be exempt, whether they actually do that or not?
President Janzer, Alderman Fuller. Um, I'm going to refer to the city attorney on this. Maybe not refer, but in our discussions, there's, there's several case laws that go into, um, determining what is charitable, um, in that aspect. And ultimately, until we have, like, till we have an actual example in front of us, we won't be able to make that determination. But those are our steps that can be put in line that may support granting exemption to a property owner. I guess Stefan, if you have any.
City attorney.
And, um, council member Fuller and assessor Kamirovsky. So I'm plugged into DIA seven and I have North Dakota Century Code section 570208 pulled up, which is what details property that's exempt from taxation. that's exempt from taxation. And the area that we're sitting in is subsection eight here. So this is what we're going to review when we receive an application. So I'm hesitant to give any like carte blanche answers as to who's going to qualify, who's not, based upon information that's tossed at us at a public meeting. We'd have to look at the application itself that's provided to us, go through it. Assessor typically will make a site visit and have an interview with the applicant, ask questions, and then we can render a more determinative opinion on that at that time. But for some guidance on that, this is what we would be, this is the section we'd be looking at when determining whether or not they would qualify for an exemption.
Alderman Fuller, continue.
All right, maybe then taking a different tact, Ryan. When we were talking, didn't you say that the state will require us to look at this with a broad brush, as far as what we're able to consider charitable, exempt, and those types of things?
President Janzer, Alderman Fuller. Yes, in several of the case laws here, it was noted from the Supreme Court on a couple of cases that it is their intention for jurisdictions to take a liberal view of application of what is charitable.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Olson.
Thank you. Just one question for Ryan, and Alderman Fuller has already alluded to the fact that there was a meeting that was held with many pastors and church board members and such from around the community, a lot of childcare directors, preschool directors that were there. Alderman Fuller and myself were both there. And at that time, you were discussing this process. But it is a process, right? And I think you kind of gave them a rough timeline of how long it would take for your office, and then, you know, in consultation with the city attorney's office, to get an answer. And at that time, I think you were saying, maybe August, maybe September. Is that still accurate?
President Janzer, Alderman Olson. Yes, that would be the timeline. The timeline I gave was, beginning of June, we'll be sending letters out to the property owners requesting them to provide documentation to support their tax exemption status. At that time, we'll give it a month or so for that information to come in. We'll review that in office, and then if we have questions, move it on to our legal counsel. And ultimately, if a determination is made that we have to remove an exemption status for a property, there is the omitted assessment process through the Century Code that they would have a 30-day notice to appeal that to the county board, county board of commissioners, appeal their exemption status, and then a valuation will be placed on the property if the county commission felt just at that point in time. And then ultimately, so we'll be probably looking around that August, September timeframe, right along the same time that estimated tax bills do go out from the county auditor and treasurer's office, and then that tax bill would be generated in December of this year.
Thank you. And I'll just add a comment in that that was shared by many of the people in the room, that that timeline does not fit well into planning for the fall. It doesn't, if you're running a preschool, you're going to already start taking applications for that preschool program that will begin in the fall. And they're hesitant to do that. It also makes parents very nervous and hesitant about knowing what the future holds for their families as far as childcare spots, not knowing if the doors of those centers are still going to be open. So, thank you.
Alderman, bless him.
Okay, Ryan, I'm good unless anybody else has, oh, maybe Scott does.
I just have one question. Ryan, when you were talking about, when you go to assess these, it's going to be just the portion that they're used for daycare. So by clarifying that, you know, there's a couple on here that are like $29,000. Well, they might be using, instead of 16,000 square feet, they're using 500 square feet. So that's going to not be nearly the amounts that we're talking here.
President Janzer, Alderman Samuelson. The information, as I mentioned before, was estimates. I know a handful of these daycares, a couple of my daycares I've been to are on here as well. Ultimately, the square footage that is used, that's leased out, that's the only portion that would be taxable if it doesn't qualify for an exemption.
Just to clarify that again, so the numbers that we got on the table, is that the total property number, or is that the percentage that you think the daycare would end up paying?
President Janzer, that is our best guess without physically reviewing the property that we believe is currently leased out on the properties. Ultimately, as we go through our verification, we'll be able to determine that to a fine tooth.
Alderman Olson.
Thank you. I did have one more comment, and the city assessor can confirm this. I asked after we met with all of the folks from the childcare centers and the churches, if there were other communities within the state of North Dakota that allowed this resolution to be passed, because it is allowed for in state century code. And a city assessor provided me with these cities and counties who have already adopted this resolution. Grand Forks, West Fargo, Fargo, Williston, Jamestown, Watford City, Midora, Rolla, Oaks, Ellendale, Grafton, Hazen, Cass County, and Grant County. So if we are able to pass this resolution tonight, we will be following a number of other cities and counties that have already made this decision.
Alderman, bless him.
Okay, so I'll be a bit of the bad guy here for a little bit. You know, I think I've been clear both last meeting and now at the beginning of this one, that I think a broad exemption just makes absolutely no sense. You know, to address Alderman Olson's comments about the other cities that have done it, they're starting from a baseline that isn't as high a property taxes as we already pay in our city. And they may be able to afford things like that because they don't have flood, and they don't have NOS, and they don't have the other burdens that we already have on our citizens. And as I mentioned, you know, two weeks ago when we had this item, the thing everybody needs to remember with this is, is when we pass an exemption like this, it doesn't mean the city brings in less money. Dave Lakefield talked at the beginning about how our budget process works. We calculate the entire thing and come up with a levy number, and then that levy number is distributed to the people of our community. That's how that works. It's the same dollar amount whether we pass this or we don't. All this does is move who pays that bill, including the very people it's meant to help, which are the young families trying to find daycare. If they own a property, their property taxes will go up as a result to this. It's clear and simple. We're choosing specific types of businesses when we do this to exempt and say, yep, you're special. I think that there's a case to be made that daycare works different. I mean, I get that. We've had these discussions on the Economic Development Committee. We had the discussion in the last meeting, thanks Paul. We've had the discussion in the last meeting. There's something broken in our market regarding childcare. But the heavy hand of government jumping in the middle of it is the last thing we need to try to fix that. And that's really what this is. The other thing to keep in mind, if we pass the across-the-board exemption, it means the multimillionaire out-of-state investor who owns a building that happens to house a childcare center now receives the tax benefit we're meaning to benefit some churches and some daycare centers. That's who actually gets the benefit. There's no guarantee whatsoever that that gets passed to the actual operator of the daycare or to the families that are associated with it. And so, again, I get it, you know, I'll be a no tonight. We'll see where the discussion goes. You know, certainly, if we were to look at something like this, and we truly thought that this was a game-changer and changed the trajectory of how childcare worked, then let's do it for a year. Let's take a look at it in a year and see what it looks like. But doing this for four years, to me, just says, no, this is permanent, because we're not going to come back from it from there. But one year would address the issue that was brought up that says August is too soon. That would allow us to figure out, does one year help us through the transition phase? And so, again, I'm not in favor of it either way, but I would ask the council, if we're going to do it, let's fix that problem, and let's give them a year to try to get work through this.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the other day, as Lisa had mentioned, we met with the childcare facilities and the churches that are in the churches, or the facilities in the churches. And I feel like we gave them the means to stay exempt from this, so we don't have to worry about it. But giving a blanket exemption to any daycare that is not in the church or in a nonprofit thing, I think that's a policy we really got to look at. And I mean, the reasons why, first, it creates an uneven playing field in Minot. Property taxes fund our roads, emergency services, and our schools. If the for-profit daycare centers are exempt while all the other small businesses in Minot aren't, that's not fair. What about the small business down the street that's struggling to survive right now because there just isn't any money out there? Because the economy is tough. Like, those folks are struggling just as bad, and we're going to shift the burden, as Mike said, we're going to shift the burden from the for-profit daycare centers to all the other businesses and homeowners here in Minot. You know, that isn't fair. It chips away at our local tax base, as Alderman Samuelson has alluded to in the past. You know, we already have, what is it, 550,000 in exempt property taxes in the city of Minot on an annual basis, and this just adds to that. Not all daycares are the same, too, as we spoke. We know the daycares in the churches are meeting a need within this community, for a lot of low-income families and those different things. But the for-profit daycares are completely different. And I'm not saying it's bad that they succeed. But before we hand out a blanket tax break across the board, shouldn't we decide if it's really necessary for every single daycare? And then I guess the one place where I struggle the most on this, and a couple people have talked about it, how does giving that tax break, and I'm not referring to the church daycares, but to the for-profit daycares, how does giving that tax break equate to cheaper childcare? Like, have those daycares come to us and said, hey, we're going to offer free, if you give us $5,000 a year in tax break, we're going to offer so much a month in free childcare services? I haven't heard that. You know, I haven't heard if they're going to be opening more slots by hiring more people. I mean, if we truly have a workforce shortage in Minot because of what we're paying or what they're being paid, how does that help? And what happens if we give this exemption, and instead of going and hiring somebody else, they take that $5,000 or whatever the number is that we're exempting, and they use it to buy supplies and different things? That isn't making daycare cheaper for anybody in town. So, like, I get it. I mean, as Paul said, I had more contact after last week's vote or two weeks ago than just about any other time up here. We all want to support the young families in Minot. We all want to have more access to affordable daycare. But let's do it with some smarter solutions without adding pressure to the rest of the tax base here in Minot. I mean, as Mike has said, everybody else is just going to pay for this. It isn't a matter of it just going away. The rest of us here have to pay for it. So I'm going to be a no on this as well.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, President Janzer. Again, I want to be clear. I don't know, and I agree with, honestly, pretty much everything's been said with Mike. I don't know if this is the answer for solving childcare issues. And with Alderman Fuller, I don't think this will make daycare exponentially cheaper. Again, because we're talking about, there's two problems here to solve. There's two buzzwords, right? Affordability and accessibility. And I know both of them very well. By the time I had actually gotten home from our last meeting, I had a Nastagram email saying I was out of touch. You didn't know what it was like to have kids in this community. You don't know what the expletive you're talking about. I've got four kids. All of them have gone through daycare. I've got two kids still in daycare. I do understand what it's like. And it's not necessarily the affordability issue. That's there. That's part of having kids. And I agree with some of the comments ever made. When you have a kid, you got to make choices. Yeah. And they're expensive, and they don't get any cheaper, apparently. I'm finding that out. But not only that, when we had our first child, and we had daycare, and then our daycare provider decided to go back into the workforce because her husband was having health issues, and we were challenged, I don't know if my wife has cried harder about where are we going to go. And we searched high and low, and then you're trying to find the person that you like, and you're interviewing, and then you're reaching out on Facebook, you're emailing your coworkers, where did you guys go? Where do you use? And everybody says, six months. How old are your kids? Oh, it's an infant? Well, we can't take them for two years, until my kids age out, until the next one ages out. Good luck. Again, I can feel the emotion of my wife in those times, as having two small, young children. Well, one of them's sitting in the audience, Charlotte, you probably won't remember this, but you guys were both probably three or younger. Part of it is the accessibility. You go to some of these daycare centers, waitlist of 200-plus people. So it doesn't matter how much money you have. It doesn't matter how cheap it is or how expensive it is. You just can't get in. And when you have a workforce issue, which, again, I don't know if this is the solution. I really do not. But it's the best we got at this point. It is the best we got. And if this can incentivize someone to go from a home daycare to a daycare center, like some of the stories we've heard, and it allows someone to take from six kids to 40 kids, that's a win. That's a win in my book. And again, when we talk about the overall numbers that we're talking about losing on, I want to say, I know I've spent money on number things in my life, but getting people into the workforce or getting accessibility to families to actually just have the opportunity to get into the workforce. And again, I don't like sending my kids to daycare. My wife was very clear. I hate the idea, Paul. I hate the idea of paying someone to watch my kids for 40 hours a week. I'd much rather do it myself. We couldn't afford that. It was a trade-off. I'm self-employed. We needed benefits, so my wife needed to work. Our family, my children, needed benefits. Again, this is a four-year ask. We can reassess this. We will reassess this. I won't be here. Some of you will be here. You can reassess this. You can repeal it. Or the state law might change. But this is an opportunity to try to find a solution for some of these issues. And that's why I will vote yes on this. I was a no before, because I don't, to the points that were made, I don't like the blanket exemption in perpetuity. To me, this was a compromise. We do it for other businesses to incentivize investment, incentivize growth, so someone isn't paying an extra $4,800 in rent. Maybe they will own their property. Maybe they'll buy a commercial property, invest in it, so that they're not having to worry about paying the property taxes on top of the rent. So again, I will vote yes on this, and I implore my colleagues to do the same.
Alderman Olson.
Thank you. So there are two sides to this. I mean, we've been discussing that a lot. There are the childcare centers that are in the nonprofits, and there are the childcare centers that are in the commercial buildings. A lot of conversations that we've had up at this DIA over the last couple of years have revolved around, are we open for business? That's always the question. Are we open for business? Well, I can tell you just by the list of all of the communities that I listed, they're open for business, and our name isn't on that list. And that's a shame. MACEDC does a survey, and I think all of you got a copy of that earlier today, where they reach out to random businesses and ask them, how are things going in Minot? What's going well? What are some challenges? How can we help you out? Month after month, year after year, the area that has the most need is childcare. It's where businesses say, if we had more childcare available in our community, we would be able to expand our business. We would see new businesses coming in. We would have more employees working in those open spots. And this is such an easy fix to be able to do that. Alderman Pittner talked about availability. We have 24% availability for families looking for childcare, which means 76% of the families that want childcare can't find it. They're on those lists of 200-plus. They're making hard decisions. Maybe they can find a spot for one child in one center and one child in another center. It's not good. ChildcareAware says that a city that has a healthy number is working at 50%. We're far below that. We've known through data that we've received through the census and just, you know, anecdotally, our community is young, and that's something to cheer about. That's something to celebrate. But if we're young, we have kids, and we need to have availability for them. I have said over and over again, I don't think that it is the city's role to take a huge part in childcare. But this is a small part. This is an easy part. It's something that other cities and counties are doing, and I think that it's something that we need to consider. If it doesn't work, we can repeal it, but we won't know unless we give it a try.
Further discussion. Seeing none, let's go ahead and record our votes.
The motion failed 3-3 with dissents from Blessam, Fuller, and Samuelson.
Okay. Moving on, we're at 7.3, which is the special election for the vacancy of the mayor. What are your wishes?
I would move that we set the date of the special election to August 5th.
Second. Moving seconded to set the special election date of August 5th. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's record our votes.
Can I just clarify one thing? And can we add in there to approve the resolution with that date, then? And can we add in there to approve the resolution with that date, then?
Yeah. Add to the motion. Who is the second?
Second.
Yeah, it's part of the recommendation. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay.
Are we good?
Yep. Time to vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Very good. Now we're moving on to section eight, which is personal appearances. This is an opportunity for you to address the council on a topic of your choice. We do ask that you limit your comments or time at the podium to five minutes so that other people can have the opportunity as well. Personal appearances.
I was kind of wanting to go ahead and speak up a little bit about the fact that not only have I gotten a number of videos where the Minot police have openly broken the law, but there's a number of other people that are trying to basically make complaints themselves. I mean, there is such a huge body of law about it being legal to record on government property, and you don't get much more government than the post office, which is on federal property. The way your cops reacted when I was reciting the law, and let's face it, nearly all auditors are investigators going to cut their teeth recording in post offices because there's so much body of law. And to just see not only the ignorance, but the willing contempt about what the law was, not only by law enforcement, but the city attorney and every level of person, to see your police chief have to retire in a cloud of scandal and half a dozen other things, I'm just kind of noticing. And I'm kind of wondering, are you guys going to even bother to try to at least train them in the most basics of the law, that you cannot arrest people for engaging in illegal activities? You cannot keep people out of public areas like the lobbies. I mean, you just, you've got to obey the law and the basics of it, especially when it comes to people that are sworn to uphold the law and to enforce it. I mean, I'm seeing complaints from the other side and Minot whiners and complainers about ignorance of the law and people, I mean, law enforcement personnel openly ignoring the law there. I mean, how serious are you guys about the basics of your duties? To the government, to what you've, your oath of office, to any of the rest? I mean, the damage that happens to people's lives when the laws are disregarded and when those who are entrusted to enforce the law basically ignore it? I mean, it was especially disgusting to see, to have Foley on camera abusing me and then to go ahead and to see that Foley was supposed to train the police force on how to handle people with disabilities. I mean, it was stunning. And the number of comments that we found at the bottom of the videos that got published, it was ridiculous. I mean, it sounds to me like you guys are bored and this sort of thing doesn't matter, but to the rest of us, it does. People are becoming less and less ignorant, and they are more and more interested in what the law says and how people who are sworn to uphold it, our elected officials and everyone in between, are abiding by it. And I guess I'll go ahead and let it be since you've misspelled my name and you're clearly ticking down that timer. And I do hope and pray that the city officials have started to get some of the videos I've sent, because let's face it, if I've been recording in that post office for about two, three years now, it's kind of obvious to everyone involved that not only do I know it's legal, but everybody in that post office knew it was legal, and so did all of your police force, your deputies, and everybody else. So thank you for my time to speak to my public officials in the facilities that I paid for.
This is public appearances, an opportunity for citizens to address the council on an item of their choosing. Seeing no one approaching, we'll...
Hold on, Mark. Hold on.
There is definitely somebody there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hello.
Are there HDMI cables here? Thank you.
I guess that's it.
It's a somber feeling being back in City Hall. This is what I see when I come into the chambers. I'm concerned at the state of our country, concerned at the state of our city. I came to address my concerns on safety and accessibility of the Miles River Plan coordinated by the City of Minot, Minot Parks, Ackerman Esfold, and the Surce River Joint Commission. City Hall is at the foundation of the concern and conversation. The city failed to plan a chamber that had a podium that met ADA requirements when it opened in May 2023, taking us back generations. The table to the right is a reminder that segregation does exist in Minot, but it is to meet ADA requirements for the podium that does not. To start, the city manager Harold Stewart said because the podium went up and down, he believed that it met ADA requirements. Because it goes up and down makes it accessible to short and tall people. In 2023, before opening City Hall, when I addressed the podium with then Alderman Padraig Gula, he stated that the city engineer Lance Mayer was the closest to the point person on accessibility. Lance Mayer turned the ADA requirement for the north door entrance on City Hall into a sidewalk complaint when it failed to meet ADA requirements for occupancy. The City Hall public restroom did not meet ADA requirements for occupancy. With hinges very heavy, it was a struggle to enter and exit. It now has ADA push buttons. This building was open not meeting ADA requirements for occupancy or having a temporary permit for occupancy until it did. Alderwoman Lisa Olson addressed if businesses wanted to make their businesses accessible, but the ADA and the ACLU say it's illegal to prohibit equal access, to not make if legal. As a member of City Council, this is concerning. I addressed at a committee meeting Alderwoman Carrie Evans hosted, understanding she's no longer Alderwoman, that the high-third restroom did not meet ADA requirements by design, and communicated how difficult it was getting in and out of, struggling for seven minutes to exit, and the difficulty entering the building, not being able to enter the first three times I tried. Ackerman Esfold likely was the architect and engineers. Carrie said that the Ackermans are so nice. Respectfully, nice does not keep their sidewalks clear for accessibility. New Year's Day, two men carried me over the train tracks because the crossing was not safe and sidewalks were not clear. CP Rail stated that it was the city's responsibility. At the same meeting, I addressed the city buses not operating properly for safety. Carrie Evans said they're expensive. You buy them. They still do not work. They have not worked properly, from radios to ramp lifts. Minot Parks does not clear all entrances or paths of snow for equal access to the parks. Minot Park paths on the north side of Surce River going east or west of Seventh Street are still not complete and have not been since 2023. The coordination with Wagner Construction in Roosevelt Park was not to clear the roads and parking lots for equal access, including wheelchair users, but for pedestrians only. It is concerning that the coordination of the City of Minot, Minot Parks, Ackerman Estfold, and Surce River Joint Board is failing to execute safety, not because there was a good plan, but because there's a poor plan. Here's an example. There's a ramp that goes up the bridge that has a differential of eight inches. On the left side, you'll see that there are plastic planks laid down that are not strapped together over loose recycled asphalt where there are breaks. Here's an example of those planks. This is an example of an ADA ramp that is an example of what is to the left of the sidewalk where there's a curb cut. When there is traffic coming from behind those signs, they wouldn't see someone exiting that ramp that's in the street. It was, it would be a miscalculation to follow the recommendation by the Transit Superintendent Brian Orinca to provide funding for the City of Minot Transit to have single point person on accessibility before making daily operations a priority. The day-to-day operations of the City of Minot Transit are not being done in order to keep drivers and passengers safe. The buses do not operate completely and/or safely. These are safety issues. There are safety issues in the routes. There are communication issues from dispatch to drivers and to passengers. I realize my time is probably coming up. Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you.
We're still on public hearings. Please come forward, state your name, address the council on a topic of your choice.
Andrew Sudbrink. Well, I'm pretty happy with the police in this podium. It looks expensive, so I'd like to use my time to whine and complain about my property taxes some more. This is just a lot for me to pay. Seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and eleven cents. And actually, this is from last year. I didn't grab the one from this year. It did go down a little bit, so thanks a little bit. Still over seven thousand dollars. Yeah, I don't know where to begin. In Bismarck, they're talking about getting rid of the property taxes altogether. And I was for that. But now I'm not because I think we'll just waste state and federal money. I do. It gives people a chance to come up here and whine and point things out. So I would, going forward, I would appreciate it if the city would just move forward with infrastructure, laws, and blood control. We're overbuilt in this town like crazy. It is nuts. At one point, there was a need for affordable housing, and private industry stepped in there and built up. They built apartment buildings like crazy all over. And, you know, rents were fifteen hundred dollars. It made sense to build them, so everyone did. We overbuilt on apartment buildings and hotels. When it was overbuilt, they quit building. The only developers that came in here building affordable housing were people that were seeking federal, state, and municipal tax dollars. No one else did it. And people gave speeches that tugged down the heartstrings for something that wasn't needed. And we were told that several years ago. Epic, a prom example. I won't, I'll give you a little bit of a pass on them because I think they've scammed the whole state. That was a company that developed all over North Dakota, projects with barely any money of their own. Investor money, tax, municipal money, state money, federal money. You look at Blue on Broadway. The city wasted millions of federal tax dollars on that project. Several million dollars went into Blue on Broadway for low-income to moderate-income housing. Well, go down to the guest lodge sometime and take a look at those people. You know, they're not staying in Blue on Broadway. A lot of people aren't staying there because they can find apartments that are cheaper, way cheaper, five, six hundred dollars a month for a two-bedroom if you look around. Now, it's not going to have X-Golf, you know? It's not going to have that. But why aren't all the people that are at the guest lodge staying there? That'd be perfect for them. That's what it's meant for. They could bring their tailor maids and play X-Golf. But waste of money, and no one's disputing that. So, just kind of moving forward, anything we do of a building seems to be a failure. You know, we've got big, multimillion-dollar projects. We're talking about seventy million dollars for a police station. Even the smallest thing, we end up messing up. Home sweet home, one home. Four hundred grand to buy it out, six hundred thousand to move it across the street. Million dollars into it. What's the city do? Maybe not some of you guys, but past council. Instead of handing it over to a real estate agent to get the most they could out of the thing, they put up a request for proposal, to put their social stamp on it, when they could have gotten a lot more. One person sent in a request for proposal and bought the place for five hundred bucks when it could have sold for a hundred and fifty. No one else put in a proposal because we thought we'd have to make it into a homeless shelter for transgender cats and dogs or something crazy. So no one put in anything. You know, now we're talking about bigger projects. I don't know. The thing that I have a problem with right now is maybe building something that is not needing, and that's a police station. City Hall just moved out of there. They've got, they've got a lot of space right there. City Hall's here. We built a new City Hall. Now a new police station? Seventy million is the number I've heard? We've probably got seventy cops that are active now, right? That's a million dollars per police officer. It just seems like a lot for me to do something like that and spend that amount of money. I guess my time's up. I'll complain more next meeting. Thanks.
Public appearances.
My name is Josiah Royce. None of you are surprised to see me? Opening up, I want to say I agree with the last gentleman very much about the police station. I talked to you guys about that last time, in case anybody missed it. The amount of money going into things. I wanted to talk about that Flock security system. I know it's not on the agenda for tonight, but because so many people are unaware, and everybody that I've talked to about it is bothered by it. We don't need cameras up on every sign and all over the place in Minot. It's a civil liberties, you know, compromise. And like the forefather said, trade liberty for, you know, security for liberty, or vice versa. Yeah, you lose both and deserve neither. Anyway. But to specify a few other things, if you guys are tabling that for a while, I would just like to recommend wait until after the election, so there's a tiebreaker, so we don't have like a three and three or something against that. I think that would only be fair for a decision that's so big to wait until there's a new mayor and all seven seats are filled. I'll leave it at that. But then furthermore, I wanted to talk about why I'm running for mayor. We've all heard, if you want something done right, do it yourself. I've been coming here for years and talking to you guys about certain things, and I'm grateful when the people get involved and know about things. But I, as mayor, would want to involve the people in more of these things because so often they don't even know what's going on. And one can say that's their own fault for not engaging and getting more into it. I was guilty of the same thing before 2020. 2020 is a wake-up call for a lot of people to get involved. They had no idea the rights that have been taken away from them over the course of, not just in their lifetime, but before that lifetime, things that constitutional rights they thought they had, that they no longer have. As you guys heard me say last time, I'm running on the prospect of being a constitutional mayor, meaning any and all laws that conflict with the Constitution are hereby null and void. We have a constitutional right to assemble. We need to get a permit from the city to have like a, whether it's an anti-abortion rally or something like that? rally or something like that? We need a permit for a constitutional right that we already have? I need a permit to carry a concealed weapon? And we got constitutional carry passed, but it's like, it's ridiculous, the amount of things that you have a right, but you don't because you can go to jail for exercising that right. That's not a right, and that stuff needs to stop. 2020 woke a lot of people up. I got involved after the rainbow flag went up on City Hall. You know, just when there's a line in the sand drawn, people decided to get involved, and that was one of those things. So I want to talk about the role of government, the proper role of government. Infrastructure, defense, you know, for national government in general, we don't need to go that far beyond that. You guys talk about taxes and stuff so much. It's getting out of control because the role of government has gotten too big. You know, it's like when, when, if grandpa's buying everybody's dinner for the rest of their life, it's like, didn't you guys grow up and become adults at some point? It's like, why do you need me to pay for everything? So on that same concept, it's like, and you look at what the money's being spent on, the police station, it's like, do you guys drive over here? Sixteenth Street, Burdick and stuff, still filthy with sand in the streets. I usually don't get my motorcycle out until like May, even though the weather's perfect for it now, because you can slip and slide, excuse me, on the streets. It's just not safe, and it's like fifty million for a new police station. Can we get a few more snowplows maybe in the winter so residential streets, you know, don't take forever to get to? There's just a list of things, and it's like, there's, there's other concerns, you know, that I'd, that I'd like to look into, including the landfill. There's some concerns there, including for helicopter safety, for the hospital being so close. But again, on the, on the prospect of being a constitutional mayor, Supreme Court case law, I've read a lot of it, and they've concluded that rights cannot be turned into privileges by the state, including things such as pathetic as a curfew. I'm an adult. I don't need a curfew, not managed by all you guys at least. There's all sorts of issues that have just gotten way out of hand. You guys heard about what's going on with CPS? Going and taking kids for being unvaccinated? When we, when we lose the rights to our kids? My family started homeschooling. My parents did, when it was illegal. Can you imagine going to jail for something like that? It's preposterous. So let me wrap it up because I know I'm running out of time. I had a lot of things I wanted to talk about, but I'll just have to come back again. Fluoride in the water, aren't those more things that concern like everybody? Like, come on, we're getting poisoned, our testosterone's going down, birth rate's going down, people's reproductive abilities are going down. Let's get the fluoride out of the water. Let's stop poisoning people. Maybe some of this money could actually go into a better water filtration system so I don't have to make sure I keep my mouth completely shut when I shower in fear of getting poisoned. And on a side note, as I'm running for mayor, they used a picture from that thing when I'm looking down like this. Here's a better shot. I've tried submitting better photos, and I haven't, they haven't put one up yet, so that's interesting. And on a final note, the last time I was here, I talked about police issues, and a lot of people have approached me, and they're afraid to approach you. A lot of people approached me wanting something to be done about police accountability, police issues. And I do acknowledge that my email failed to go through to you guys, but I'm just saying it on the record right here. I have tried to get investigations from the FBI and turned away. I've gone to BCI myself, and they said it has to be a city councilman or somebody that works for, you know, some elected official that can request a BCI investigation. So I'm asking the whole council right now, will you please get in contact with me about a BCI investigation? Because the prospect of having our own police department investigate themselves for their crimes is beyond lunacy to me. With that, I yield, because I know, oh, and regarding that fifty million dollar police station, I had a nice conversation with Senate Majority Leader David Hoag about that, and he made an excellent point I want to credit him with, which is, Minot's population has flatlined. Why are we expanding our city government? Why are we expanding our police department, hiring more officers? Population's not going up, so you're just disproportionately affecting government over freedom. And as the forefather said, you can't increase government without decreasing freedom and vice versa. Thank you very much.
We're on personal appearances. Opportunity to address the council on something that you're...
I'll be brief. Hello, I answer the name David Wiley. I've only spoken once here before, many, many years ago. Good evening to you all. I wanted to first of all say in just kind of a general way, thanks. Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Thanks to Josiah for having the courage to come up and speak about, I think, issues that are affecting a lot of us. I make a brief statement here, and this is not an egotistical statement. I don't want validity or thanks, but... Guys hear me? Okay. I'm a veteran of the 101st Airborne Division, and I served in two other components of the military. And I didn't do that. I've had seven surgeries because of my time in service, and I experienced a lot of pain every day. And I didn't do that so I could wake up one day and see my country seem like, you know, we're becoming East Germany. And a lot of people are talking about that. Mike, you said, you know, the heavy hand of government. It, when does this end? I agree with everything that Josiah said. I've had, I've had dangerous encounters with, with the police before. Officer Jared Foley pulled me over over a registration issue and pointed a gun at my head. That's how he initiated the traffic stop. I'll never forget that. That was back in 2017. There is no accountability to the government. They, they're, I mean, what do we expect people to punish themselves when they do wrong? Of course, they're not going to be forthright and tell the truth and be honest about that. Those seem to be buzzwords. And what he brought up is, is new to me. I don't know a lot about it, but this security system. Look at, look at the seatbelt law. You know, it started out as this soft benign little thing. Okay, you know, we can't pull you over for seatbelts, but if we pull you over, you know, we're going to give you a ticket for it. Just give it some time and it'll change. And so I would ask you to seriously reconsider this so-called security thing. You want to put cameras everywhere on us. I don't want to live in an open-air prison system. You know? I would agree with you. I mean, there's going to be crime, and it should be dealt with, but, you know, go back to common law. It was, it was ingenious, common law. I have the right as a sovereign human being, and I'm not a sovereign citizen, but just the word, a sovereign human being, I'm governed by my own consciousness. I know that I owe all of you civility, you know, a little bit of respect. I'm not going to go out and just harm someone, which, by the way, which was common law. There's no broken law unless you've caused harm to someone, with very few exceptions, you know, neglect and things like that. And you know what reminds me of, let me ask you all a quick question. Have you ever heard of Eric Severod? His saying became known as Eric Severod's Law. And that is, the chief source of mankind's problems are his solutions. You know, it's just this cycle of insanity. You're all aware that we have more people in prison in this country than like the next, it's either five or eight other countries. I get that mixed up with the amount of money we spend on military, too. And, and so when does it end? When does it end? Is there anything that you guys ever talk about that doesn't involve that dollar sign? Is there anything that isn't? I mean, I understand you're under pressure, too, because you're running a corporation here. But I'm asking you guys, look inside. What are we here for? Look inside a little bit, make a decision as a public servant that you are here, not for me, but the people behind me. You owe them decency, honor, you know, integrity, and those shouldn't be buzzwords. Those should be actual words that we try to live by. So I'll try to be brief. It's been a long meeting. I know there's other people that want to speak. Thank you for your time, and I hope you consider deeply the things that have been spoken about today. Thank you.
My name is Charles Tuttle. This is probably going to be the last time I'm going to talk to everybody as a Minot I've been listening to the budget, listened to the money situation that's been going on for years. I actually started to make Minot Group to change the city council. It just seems like we, we keep going further and further into big government here. This is the initiated measure on stopping the landfill. And what are we now? We're a regional landfill. We can't make enough money on the landfill for the city, so we go out and we, sixty percent of our landfill is out of the county. Okay? It's not even in the, in the city. And it's time we close the landfill, move it, you know, eliminate, you know, government employees. There's so many ways to save money. Well, we give the state fair for a hundred thousand dollars a year. Why? It's a, it's a political subdivision that makes a profit. It's crazy what money we give away in Minot. And I stood here and I asked Tom Ross to resign because he took a position on the initiated measure by the people, and I didn't see any of you guys back me up on that. It was a violation of law, clear sixteen point one dash ten. You cannot oppose or support an initiated measure by the people using your political office. That's the taxpayers' money. And guess what? You guys should all be getting a refund for the taxpayers against the League of Cities for the 2023 and 2024. They openly gave money. You can go to the Secretary of State's website, you can see the money they gave to oppose an initiated measure by the people. Where do you think they get their money? They get it from the taxpayers. They actually used our tax dollars to oppose the property tax. And you guys, you guys can't even see it. When you abolish property tax, you, you actually make more money. It's simple. The reinvestment into the community with people, there was a hundred and seventy-four houses up in Ward County for non-payment of taxes. You guys realize that? And I remember when we did the first measure, too. I was part of that. Oh, we don't have a problem in North Dakota, people losing their homes? Yes, we do. You guys need to lower taxes, reduce the size of government, and put, when you put it back in the pockets of citizens, the Chamber of Commerce has always said, every dollar is spent seven times. One point one billion dollars, if we abolished the property tax, would have meant seven billion dollars into our economy. And yet, everybody was talking about, oh, the out-of-state, oh, out-of-state. A half, million and a half dollars was brought in from out-of-state to defeat that. And by the way, our constitution says you're not allowed to fund property tax for schools. The Legislative Assembly shall provide for a uniformed system of free public schools throughout the state. Article 10, public financing debt. The Legislative Assembly shall be prohibited from defraying those expenses of the state through the levying of assessed value of real or personal property. So why are we doing it? You know, daycare. I saw that, I'm like, that's a no-brainer. Okay? That puts money back in the pockets of citizens. Best work, and that will be spent. We need to start basic economics, and everybody seems to have forgotten when it comes to government. Okay, I had a gentleman come up to my table. I'm furious about this. This gentleman, I'm not going to give you his name and number, but I will later. He sold his home to Minot. The City of Minot bought his home. Now, I haven't gotten how many homes were bought after the flood. I'm guessing maybe anywhere from a hundred to four hundred homes. He got forty-five thousand dollars from FEMA. Now, that money was to sustain him after the flood. It was reported in the paper, is what he's telling me, and we can verify this, that the city gave him a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for his home. That was the value of the home. Oh, guess what Minot did? They subtracted his forty-five thousand dollar FEMA and took it and pocketed it. Now, I want to find out and verify this, and I'm going to go start looking at all the records. But that's the other thing. And the only thing is Shane Gatto. You guys pay Shane Gatto seven thousand dollars a month to be a lobbyist for the City of Minot, and you lie and say he's our lawyer. I'm sorry, that's an unethical problem. You cannot have someone lobbying for a political subdivision. It's illegal and it's unethical, and to say he's a lawyer? He gets three thousand dollars a month, and this is probably less than now. That was three or four years ago. So these are the things that we need to start looking at. This is money being spent that doesn't need to be spent, and it should go back to the taxpayers. Thank you.
We're in personal appearances. Anybody else?
Edana Kitzman. A few weeks ago, you had a discussion about wanting to prohibit out-of-state companies coming in and bidding and getting bids on big projects or any projects because you want to make sure the local people get the money and the work. Well, when they were putting up the power plants, out-of-state had the money and the reputation to deal with the marketing companies that supplied the materials. And they could have five, six semis come in with pipe or iron. Whether the government paid them on time or not, they had the collateral to back up that invoice and carry the project through. When they came into North Dakota, they hired electricians, plumbers, ironworkers, probably fifty to sixty or more percent North Dakota people. That's called hiring local. Of course, the issue then was they were union, and non-union doesn't like that, and they fight all the time with each other. But I think if the employers of union, they have the lawyer representation, and the employers of the non-union, who should be able to afford lawyer representation also, if they got money to back themselves up on a proposal, and discuss, can we come to an fair agreement with each other for a fair price in wage for these local workers? And they can all get in the pot of the money to earn out of a government project or private project. I see no reason that out-of-state, bigger companies with the collateral to pay and keep the project being going when the government falls behind six months because the check's in the mail. That happened a lot with the power plants in the seventies, and there was always a back and forth, how long is it going to take? And some of it was extended further, but there was a lot of legal stuff going on. To avoid that, you have money in their bank account to back them up. I know we got a lot of rich people in North Dakota that can do this, too, but they may not have the connections and the, and the reputation with the large suppliers outside, the iron and the mills, to get that proposed dollar amount. And I remember when I paid the bills for this one company, it was small. The invoice came in. Pay this total by the tenth, you get a ten percent discount. Well, that's a pretty good deal if you've got six semis and you're paying ten percent discount on a bill like that. That's a lot of money. Can go right back to the wages and the employee benefits and sustain the company that's doing the work. You know, he said twenty, thirty thousand just to put a proposal together. I wouldn't have that. I don't know how many single individuals in Minot would do that for a large project, yet alone have all the backup to pay. You know, so I think it's a workable situation to not prohibit, but you can put stipulations in the proposal, hire local. If you need five electric companies to finish a project, we probably got five electric companies with fifty employees each to spare for that big job. That's five companies making money. I don't see what's wrong with that. Same with plumbers, ironworkers, anything. And it doesn't have to be union only, but we can work together with that if the employers get together on it. I can't, I'm not an employer. So, thank you.
Still on personal appearances. Seeing nobody further. Okay, ladies first, apparently.
President Janser, city council members. My name is Karen Royce. Josiah's my son, and I would like to yield my time to Josiah for him to finish his message.
Thank you, Mom. You're shorter than me. So just to wrap up, I wanted to clarify that I'm a Minot-born resident. My family's from here, on both sides of the family, from a long time back. I was born and raised here. I do love this city. It's home to me. I grew up riding my bicycle. I have to go see my... I grew up riding my bicycle, I have to go see my grandma and stuff, I had both sets of grandparents living here in Minot. Mine's very near and dear to my heart. And so when I come up here and I speak on issues, it's because I remember some better days, and I believe better days can be in the future, and I want better days. And I hope that we can all be on the same page, that, you know, even if we have different methods, different ideas of how to get there, that that's where we all wanna end up, and, and, you know, with a more pleasant living experience in Minot. So, just to be clear, I do love this city. It's home to me, it always has been. I've lived away for temporary stints of time, uh, for work, tried living temporarily, you know, a few months at a time in different cities and states. It was a great adventure, I got well-rounded, but I got to see how different cities, different states operated, uh, and there were certain perks of living in, in different places, different, different rights. I would have loved if North Dakota could have modeled off of South Dakota and not shut down at all for, you know, COVID and all that nonsense. Um, if we had, I'd still own my downtown business, Yoga Faiu. Uh, I, I've missed having that business, it was a, it was a nice thing to have in Minot. I'm tighter now because I don't stretch anymore, 'cause I don't go, since I don't have it anymore. But that being said, back to the constitutional premise of things. I just wanted to show, you guys have heard me speak before about Sheriff Richard Mack, who won a case against the Clinton administration, the Supreme Court back in the nineties. He's got great books, and he and I have had conversations, great conversations, about the proper role of law enforcement, and that the, uh, the constitutional sheriff is the direction that we need to go. To credit Mr. Wiley's point, constitutional sheriff, it makes all the difference, 'cause we didn't have to shut down like that, even if the state of North Dakota did. If all we had here was a constitutional mayor and a constitutional sheriff, you could've told Doug Burgum, yeah, we're not shutting down here, do something about it. And who knows how that would've gone, but that's what I want out of my law enforcement. That's what I want to see. I want to see my law enforcement actually stick up for my rights. I want them to protect me from government overreach, from federal overreach. There's all sorts of other issues we could talk about regarding taxes, like the parking garages and, and things like that, and there are some very genuine concerns about the landfill. But also, uh, Mr. Janser, I wanted to give you an opportunity to clarify, the day after I announced my intent to run at the City Council here, the last time I was here, the very next day, you had an interview with the Dakotan, uh, that I got to watch. And at that time, I showed you that I got the petitions, and said I'd turn them into the city clerk, so that election was happening. When you were asked about it, um, by the Dakotan, you said, well, we'll see if anybody gets the petitions, and then, of course, we'd have to see, you know, if anybody's even looking to run for mayor. Now, I'd looked you in the eye the previous night and said it to you, so I'm just wondering, were you having like a cognitive memory issue, or were you just being a dishonest politician? Serious question.
The reason I stated it that way was because until the signatures on the petition were certified by the city clerk, it, there was, you know, it was an open question.
Oh, so then, by that logic, you still don't know if anybody's intending to run, including
We passed an a, a, agenda item just previously that answers that question.
Interesting. All right, well, with that, I thank you for your time.
Hello, Jeff McDougald here. Just a short little time up here, hopefully. It was mentioned before about the fluoride. I don't know if any of you are aware of it, but the FDA has just admitted that fluoride is basically not for human consumption. Hopefully, you will look into that. I see no purpose in fluoride in the water. Do any of you, is there a reason why the fluoride is in the water? Would anyone care to answer that? Nobody? Hopefully, I could encourage you folks to look into that and look at the FDA determination that it is not for human consumption. Let me get my glasses here. The other lady up here had mentioned about video recording in the post office, was that it?
Yes.
Okay. And she did mention about the oath, apparently the police are not allowing her to do that, was that the situation?
They arrested me. They told me, "I'm not in this, I'm in order." I guess they arrested me because they were breaking the law.
Okay. So with that, the police are required to have an oath of office to the state of North Dakota and to the United States of America. If they're going to take that oath, they should damn near know what they're talking about and what they're taking an oath to. Otherwise, the oath is void, it doesn't mean anything. Okay? A lot of people here have brought up some very important things today, and we've all heard this term, government is of the people, by the people, and I'll put the emphasis on for the people. So that's what I would hope to see some changes go towards, is for the people. We are here, you are here to serve the people, you're public servants. And I think we can all do better, me included, everybody. So that's what I'd like to leave you with.
Seeing no one else approaching, uh, we'll move on. Hello again.
Hi, um, I think I have like a minute and a half left, and I forgot to mention those flock cameras. Firstly, um, does that roof leak at the police station where, um, me and the other, um, reporter were not allowed to enter the public lobby? I've got all kinds of samples, by the way, of the public literature that's available for the public, public resources, and other things, if you care to see it, but, long story short, we don't need to be spending seventy million on a new police station when the old one's still standing, and, um, the behavior of the police are such an issue, or lack thereof honorable legal behavior. Um, and I won't lie, spending any money at all on disturbing brave new world things like flock cameras and other dystopian things is beyond disturbing. Um, things that the other speakers didn't mention is the fact that when you initially apply for unemployment, I don't know how many years this has been in place, but they forced me to scan my face for a three-D image, for facial scanning or recognition technology. Um, uh, that also takes place with that Gold Star ID, and it's more than a little disturbing to see the flock cameras come in because basically that's a real-time thing of every place your vehicle's been, even if it's nobody's business. We're supposed to have laws in place for, that require things like search warrants and privacy issues. Um, the idea that a political dissident could possibly get in trouble, or even somebody who's doing their own investigation on corruption of public officials, it would have to go ahead and contend with that, is just beyond disturbing. China is not the direction we wanna go with this. This is liberties, these are liberties that our, uh, not only our founding fathers fought and lived and died for, but every generation since, and I'm finding it more than all disturbing that we could possibly lose them in my generation. And I don't want it to be said that we did it because, I mean, we sat down and died quietly, not when there's so many legal avenues that, um, concerned citizens and patriotic citizens can and should take, venues that we should pursue in order to put a stop to this. We can't afford that stuff. You guys were fighting over, uh, whether or not you could afford to let taxes go on daycares. How is it that we're spending so many millions on moving an old house and then selling it for five hundred? We're spending so many millions on a police station, we're trying to spend money on flock cameras that nobody wants, and God forbid those new utility poles would contain smart cameras. Um, these are things we don't want or need. I mean, we citizens are capable of taking care of ourselves, and I guess you've had about enough of me.
You, you, you've more than used up your additional time.
Thank you, Mr. Janser.
Okay, seeing nobody else, uh, we'll move on, uh, to miscellaneous and discussion items. So, um, this, this is a, um, essentially a, a report of the, uh, Alcohol Ordnance Review and Rewrite Committee, um, of their recommendations. And, um, the reason it's in, in miscellaneous and discussion items is that it's not, uh, it's not an item for action tonight. Uh, this is an opportunity for the, for the council and the public to hear what the recommendations of the committee are, and then it will be placed on, uh, future agenda, probably for, for next meeting. And so, um, uh, I'm gonna ask Alderman Pittner to kinda talk through this a little bit. Um, the, the recommendations of the committee, uh, appear to be a choice between four different, uh, approaches, and so, uh, Paul, if you'd go through that for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, again, I'll, I'll go through some of my notes here, um, when this, when this committee, this committee was formed from actually a council meeting that I was actually not even in attendance at. There was, there was a item placed on an agenda and asking how we wanted to, to move forward, looking at, at liquor license, um, ordinances, and it was recommended that the city would do this in-house at that time. So then, since I wasn't there, I drew this short straw, and I was, I was picked to chair the committee, which I was happy to do. Um, so through this process, we started, we met for several months, um, and actually had a little bit of a hiatus in there from November until our, our last meeting, in order to give staff a lot of time, what, what was the, the analogy that was used, that we chopped a lot of wood, and we needed to give staff some time to, to stack it. So, um, when the council made a decision to form this committee, and I was tasked to be its chair, um, I knew that this was going to be filled with some very sensitive, sensitive topics. This is, this is not new to this body, or actually a lot of communities across the country. Uh, throughout the work, the committee, uh, used the guiding principles, uh, and they were, and they were, uh, as follows, um, to make Minot as pro-business, pro-growth, and pro-entrepreneurship as we possibly could. Through this work, while holding these principles paramount, the committee recommended several changes, um, and I'm, I'm not gonna get them all, there, there's a lot in there, and that's another reason why we wanted to give the council and the community time to digest this document and give us feedback, um, on, from, from all perspectives. But we made changes to outdoor dining, we included a preamble, so we can clearly state what is expected of our license holders, uh, something that we, we stole from the, the Grand Forks. Um, uh, ordinances, a revised revocation process, a renewed emphasis on prioritizing complacency of establishments, um, annual meetings that we'd like to set up between staff and license holders to promote compliance, um, as well as path forward on, on potentially removing the cap. Um, now, when I think of the, the topic of the cap specifically, um, because this is probably the most sensitive of the recommendations, um, I'm actually gonna, I did it earlier, I'm gonna, I'm gonna quote Alderman Fuller again, um, because he said it, I think, really well on, on an October third interview on the Dakotan, while discussing Minot's building codes and policies and how it affects growth and development in the city, and I quote, "There's an idea out there that Minot makes it hard to do business. We make you jump through hoops, we make you do these requirements that other places aren't making you do, and that stifles growth, that stifles some of the growth," end quote. Now, when he was asked and challenged by his co-star, uh, our, uh, co-host Jonathan Starr, um, "When you were a business owner, did you feel that?" To which Alderman Fuller responded, "Well, I did not build in the city of Minot, and why did I not build in the city of Minot? Because it would've been too much of a pain in the butt to do it. So I built four miles outside of town." The discussion continues, end quote. The discussion continues, and Fuller goes on to explain his theory of how Minot may have become anti-growth and anti-development, and, and I agree. And I quote, "There's a, there is this knee-jerk reaction. They put in the most restrictive policy and ordinances and codes to control all that, control all of that, and here we are, stuck in with these very restrictive policies, codes, and ordinances, and I think it's time to revisit all of this," end quote. And I think when it comes to the cap, which is implemented in response to prohibition era, to the best we know, it is time to revisit this. Now, when it came to removing the cap, this is, this was a, a very sensitive topic, and it was, it was, it was a, it was a roadblock to kind of the, the committee doing its work at times. So they didn't take, we didn't take the decision lightly, to which point the committee actually paused its discussion on this topic and made, and, and offered up to City Council to make a decision whether or not it had an interest in even removing the cap. We didn't wanna waste the time and effort of, of, of the committee or staff, um, talking about a discussion that there was no appetite for. So, um, it was presented to council whether or not we should allocate funds to retain outside council, to see if this was even a legal option. The motion to support this direction passed unanimously by this body. Um, the investment yielded a memo that provided the city with legal green light, stating that the city retained the right to remove the cap and was not required to provide any compensation to current license holders. And the city faced minimal risk if it chose to remove the cap on the retail liquor, beer, and wine licenses and provided no compensation. Now that this committee knew that this was a possibility to remove the cap, with the blessing of City Council, the outside council, and discussion moved on, how do we provide value to the current license holders that will be the most affected by this change while adhering to our guiding principles? Um, and I'll, I'll kinda, I'll touch on some of these, these different proposals, and you'll see there's one, leave the cap in place. Um, there was one that was a product of the memo, you can remove this cap and, and provide no compensation. That was a possibility. Um, you might get sued, you might get sued for anything, but we felt like we had good legal, legal grounds. Um, there was a discussion on maintaining a minimum value on the licenses between a hundred, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, while providing license holders the first right refusal if anyone wanted to join the market. However, after further consideration, um, the committee felt that this idea may potentially, um, maintain value for existing, uh, owners of retail liquor, beer, and wine licenses. It may have failed to maintain the principles of the committee, to make Minot the most pro-business, pro-growth, and pro-entrepreneurship community by replacing one unreasonably high barrier to, of entry for another. So that's when another proposal was, and, and the previous proposal, uh, we'll see is item number three, Kevin Black's proposal. I, um, I offered up my own proposal, um, a recommendation that reflects the melding of the principles, making Minot an example of pro-business policy by letting the free market work, by reducing the license fee to five thousand dollars. The committee also achieves providing value and not perpetuating value to existing license holders by essentially buying back licenses with a payment of twenty-five thousand dollars of city economic development dollars, as well as attaching a twenty-year waiver to license renewal fees. With this new license fee schedule proposed by the committee, this equates to a value in today's dollars of an additional hundred thousand dollars on top of the twenty-five thousand dollar payment, initial payment. Uh, that waiver would be indexed to inflation of renewal fees, therefore, if the City Council at any point in time raised renewal fees, um, uh, that credit and that waiver would only become more valuable, valuable. So again, in summary, when, when, when asking the legal question of can we remove the cap, the answer provided by our memo from outside council was yes. Now, I'll look to our city attorney, Staff Agent, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit, do you agree with the position taken by outside council that if litigation were to be brought against the city due to removal of the cap, that the city would be successful in its defense?
Uh, City Council and Alderman Pittner, yeah, I, I agree with the logic that was raised in our outside council's memo.
And, and the only reason I ask, I, I, I bring that up is because I, I think that's, that's, that was the most contentious item, right? And that's, 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 that was, I watched, you watched from the outside the last time we had these conversations, um, and that was, that was the thing, right? Everybody's afraid of getting sued, we're gonna sue you, we're gonna sue you, and, and again, this, this committee took this very seriously, and, and this proposal of moving out of bad policy, um, and, and, and moving towards a, a, a pro-business, open the market, let it work while maintaining value, because we don't wanna get sued. Nobody wants to be in that situation, that's counterproductive for everybody. We wanted to protect those individuals that, that invested in, in this market and into this, um, in, in, into this industry. And again, there was lots of different ideas that were brought up, um, a lot of different counterpoints, and, and again, at every single committee meeting that we held, it was open for public input. Every single one that we had, we opened the floor to have anyone and everyone that was in attendance speak and address the committee with their concerns. Um, there was an idea, one, one thing I've floated out there, there was an idea of lenders accepting licenses as collateral. And in my opinion, that's for the lender to, to figure out. That's not for the city council to worry. If my house, if I buy a house for, uh, um, two hundred fifty thousand dollars and my value is decreased to two hundred thousand dollars, no one compensates me for that loss. And in this case, actually, we're fully compensating to market value, um, the removal of the license fees. And that twenty, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, how did we come to that? When you consider the previous five licenses issued or transferred, the values have been a hundred twenty-five thousand, a hundred and one thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight, a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred thousand and five dollars, and two hundred and ten thousand dollars. I do have a graphic that I'll, I'll, I'll hope to, uh, attach when we were working through those scenarios, those are the last transactions, and the two hundred and ten thousand dollars, that's the one issued by Target, you know, uh, you know? We're also expecting to receive one back, maybe, uh, this summer, a liquor license that hasn't been in use, that was extended and now is, is projected to come back, that would be a transfer at the value of zero dollars. Um, you know, another concern brought to the attention of the committee by one bar owner was, and I quote, "You can open ten more bars, and in my opinion, what is going, what that is going to mean is ten more bars are going to suffer. There's only so much pie to go around," end quote. And this is my opinion. And this is my opinion, that this body should not concern itself with pie. And in this case, the pie is the bottom line of a private business. We are here to be policymakers. We are here to open the market and let the market decide. In my opinion, competition is economic development. We talk about economic development a lot, it's a big buzzword. When you have businesses and they're forced to compete, they compete on customer service and the quality of experience. I was always raised on the, on the idea that, you know, the best deals are when both sides aren't happy. That means there's been compromise, right? Does the city want to pay to get out of bad policy? No. Do license holders want to lose their, their exclusive nature to this market? No. Neither party is happy with what they're having to give up. But I think at the end of the day, if the removal of the cap is the direction that the council had an appetite for by hiring to get a legal opinion at one point, we got the legal opinion that says, yep, you have a, a legal green light to do this. I think this is an opportunity to remove the oligopoly, right? The, the exclusive nature of a small market and give this asset back to the citizens and the entrepreneurs in the community. And I will stand for any questions. I know there's a lot to digest. I look forward to the spirited conversation when this is back on the agenda. But if anybody has any questions for me, Michaela was there, Steph was there, we'll do our best to, to answer any of those questions or concerns.
Counsel, any questions? Alderman Fuller?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, Paul. One of them in there, the current market value that you guys came up with of the $100,000, $125,000. How does that fly with the members or the business owners out there that have licenses that paid more for that? Now, I know you, you were talking about your house going down in value, but the city isn't coming in and saying, hey, we're gonna drop the value of your house, which is what we're, we would be willing to do in this instance if we say they're only worth $125,000. And then the second part of that question, if a bank has already used this as collateral to the tune of, say, $200,000, and we go ahead and say, hey, it's only worth $100,000, now the bank is gonna go to that customer and say, hey, I need another $100,000 in, in collateral from you. And that's gonna happen and it's gonna put that business owner with his bank in a tough position. So I mean, I, I'm trying to work through those two things right there. I mean, what would, what would your response be to that?
I'll, I'll hand it over to Steph first and then I'll, I'll respond.
And I, and I debated stating this a little bit earlier, but one of the things that I discussed with Katie Schmidt, we kind of, we both agree on here is that, so takings claims are something that's been raised a few times during this discussion. And those are typically focused on the ability to operate under a license, not on the value of being able to sell it to a third party. So in the instance that you stated, like if a bank has a lien on the liquor license and they foreclose and they step into the shoes of the prior license holder, they have ability to generate revenue by operating underneath that license. So it's, it's not, not only that the liquor licenses themselves are valuable because there's a transferability to them, but they also, they generate revenue. They give your ability to do something like that too. So it's not just the price, the cost that it takes to obtain the license. You generate money by having that license, even if you're the bank. You can step into the shoes and you can keep making money using that license.
Bank's gonna take over a bar, I promise.
But the option's there, the opportunity is there.
And if I may, Mr. President, just, just respond again. So through this, I, I leaned on the industry as well. I have several friends that are commercial bankers and lenders in town and they say this is the absolute worst collateral anyone would ever take. You would be a fool to take this as collateral. And if you do take it as collateral, it's probably a handshake agreement. It's probably somebody doing it for a friend. And the idea behind it is why would, why would a financial institution take a license that gives you permission to operate a business? Prohibition comes into place. Who are you gonna sue? Federal government? Again, again, I don't think that's for this body to concern itself with. I think that is, that is a financial transaction between two individuals, an individual and their financial institution. And, and, and I question whether or not that that is actually happening.
Alderman, bless him.
Okay, so I'll, I'll just start a little bit at the beginning with sort of the way that I'm thinking about this to start with. And that's that, at some point in the past, as, as Alderman Pittner alluded to, we decided that this was the right way to approach this industry. I, I say we collectively as a city, because I certainly wasn't there at the time. And, and I, you know, I think today for sure that was done incorrectly, at least by today's standards. I think if we, you know, if we decide that there's a special burden that this industry places on society or on the community as a whole or on the police force, then there are other ways to get at that. But I look at it this way, there shouldn't be barriers to entry into industries. I mean, we had a, we run a tax office, we had a, we had a sign go up on the building next door saying somebody doing new tax returns. They didn't even have to tell the city, let alone get a license to do it. They just put a sign up and opened the door. In the liquor license world, you've got to jump through every hoop you can imagine and hunt down a license to make that work. And we're stifling the entire market that way. I understand that there are concerns about how, you know, how this will infect the ones that are there and the competition that comes into it. That's every business in town and every business in this country. We all face that. And I think we need to do it right. So that's the first part of my thought process here. The second part is the city created the problem. So the, the idea that we're gonna need to spend a bunch of money to get ourselves out of the problem makes a lot of sense to me, actually. You know, if we've created a market where this is what they're worth, and I, I think, I think Alderman Pittner's probably got a pretty good number, that's about the, the idea that I had, had come to as well in terms of the dollars. And I think, I think that's the right approach. I think we're going to need to do that. I'll say this as well, you know, I, I appreciate the, the alternate proposal, Black's proposal. And there's a, there's a thought process there and it kind of follows where the other cities in the state have gone. If I remember right, Fargo's at something like 68,000, Grand Forks is maybe a little bit higher than that. But man, talk about stifling entry into a market. You know, think of any business that you start and the capital you need to get, whether you're buying a building or you're just buying equipment, office equipment, all of that. Add on, in this case, with that proposal, another $100,000 just to buy the right to enter the market. Talk about stifling competition and stifling the market top to bottom. That's absolutely what that does. In a perfect world, I would love to see this at zero in terms of even a yearly fee, because again, most other businesses operate with no yearly fee to the city that they've got to pay. I think there's a case to be made, maybe in this particular case, that there isn't a burden, there is a burden that our police department, that our first responders actually do bear and that we could collect that $5,000, not because we need the revenue as a city, but because it's the right trade-off between the world that we're in now and where we want to go to. And maybe at the end of those 20 years, after we've paid back the current license holders, we're able to remove that $5,000. I don't know, it won't be me here sitting, making that decision. So that's, that's, that's the ways that I'm looking at it. Now, the one thing that you did mention there, Paul, that I want to get a little bit of clarification on, and it might take Dave to talk about this, I think you talked about having that come from economic development dollars. And so can you just talk about that quickly and then if Dave has something he wants to respond to?
Yeah, again, and I'll, maybe, maybe I'll actually kind of defer to Dave right out of the gate, but that was one of the, the source of funds that we identified that potentially be a source without, again, going on to property taxes. This is something that, when you talk about removing barriers to entry, encouraging competition, those are some of the things, the ideas. And, and if there's a better source or a more appropriate source, I think this, this council would absolutely, the committee absolutely would be willing to, to entertain that. And, and another thought, so again, Dave, give me a thumbs up, thumb down if, if you're good with that. Did I, did I cover it up? And well, Dave comes up here with his computer and, and a wealth of knowledge. Again, this is, you're absolutely right, Alderman, bless him, I, I won't be here in 20 years. I won't be here in, 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 in two years. And to that point, this conversation has come up before. Some of the members sitting at this day have dealt with this conversation before. And I, and I, and I implore you that if we don't do something to, to remove these issues and these barriers, this will come up again. To me, this was an opportunity and this was one of our, one of our guiding principles of maintaining value for the current license holders or providing some value back in the tune of what we consider the market value right now. It could come up again with that same legal reasoning and the next body could say, you get nothing. To me, this was a compromise. This was a path forward so that we could move forward and move past this issue so we're not even talking about it again. But Dave?
Mr. President, members of the council. So I'm going to refer to the ordinance when it speaks about economic development and particularly, it's a sales tax ordinance and it is a little bit vague when it deals with the city of Minot activities. But the, and I'll just read the, that section of the ordinance so we can talk about it. It's 15% shall be expended either on permanent flood control projects or for creation of jobs through retaining and expanding commercial, industrial, agricultural, recreational and educational activities in a Minot area with set expenditures to be governed by, governed by the applicable criteria imposed by the magic fund committee and Minot city council or three for city of Minot economic development activities to be approved by city, Minot city council or any combination of the above. So it, now it gets into the conversation about what is economic development and what's an appropriate use of economic development funds. So it's, it's a little bit deeper conversation. I don't think it, in my opinion, is that it does not meet the criteria for the magic fund. It wouldn't be considered primary sector. And so I think that, for me, is a hard no. But the city of Minot economic development activities, that would be the discussion that we'd have to have in review of state law and to see if that, if that would be a good fit.
Alderman, bless him. So, so Dave, that's, that's kind of where my mind went as well. It, it certainly doesn't fit primary sector and actually, even, even if it had a bunch of the dollars that are already in the magic fund itself, wouldn't apply because they were brought in under a different criteria. I think you've talked about that in the past. But in terms of the, of the city dollars, so as an example, if, if this, I, I don't know, we're looking at 30 to 40 of them, it's something, you know, upper, closer to a million, I think, even for the upfront dollars. If we were to take those dollars and split them in the city fund, this, the, I think it's the fourth bucket if I remember right, and say, we're gonna do, you know, $400,000 for two years and then whatever remainder in the third year, is that an acceptable use under the ordinance as you see it?
Mr. President, Alderman, bless him. Again, I think that would be the conversation. The ordinance is somewhat vague when it references city of Minot economic development activities. So then I think we get into the, the semantics of whether essentially using the funds to buy back these liquor licenses would be considered economic development. And I, I didn't have time this afternoon to go back and review the state law regarding that, so I'm not saying it's not, but it would be something that we would have to research further.
Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, President Jeter. Again, and, and David, just, I don't even think we have to break it up because before anything flows into the magic fund or any of those buckets, the city has control of those funds to the tune of a million plus dollars out of that, that, that percentage of the penny. So again, I don't think we, 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 we control the money before it even goes into that bucket and hits that, that check valve. So if I'm correct.
Mr. President, Alderman Pittner, that is correct to some extent, but there are other things that are funded out of that, that flow of cash as well, including the contract with M A C E D C, contract with Service Base and Planning Council and some of those other things that are funded on an annual basis. I think last year in the budget, if I remember correctly, it was about 1.3 million that was allocated towards the state matching funds program and the facade improvement program. I believe that that may have used some money that was reserved from the year before from an excess collection that we had over what was budgeted. So some of that will come into play too and, and what the sales tax collections do versus what was anticipated in the budget. If we have some in, in the bank to spend in addition to what we anticipate being collected, so that number can fluctuate a little bit between now and budget time.
All right. Alderman Olson?
Not, not a question for Dave, but a question for Paul. Was there any consideration given to removing the cap but not paying out the $25,000 and just allowing that liquor license holder to maybe extend past 20 years of not making a license payment? Maybe you make it 30 years or however, you know, to make that, that equitable so that there isn't money going out, we're just, again, limiting what is coming in? Was that ever considered?
Thank you, President Jeter. Alderman Olson, yes. I, I, I think all those things, and all those are open to discussion. I don't think any of these proposals have to be followed in their, in their, you know, if this is just the framework and then this body makes adjustments based off of what we find appropriate. I, to me, it was just, it was a good faith cash buyout of a down payment, just like a, just like a, an individual buys a home. You give a down payment and then you make these payments back to bar owners and, and license holders over a, a 20-year period in, in, in real cash. I mean, this is, this was, we talk about it sometimes up here, this was measure four. This was real money and that, that, that isn't going into government, that is going back into people's pockets that they can keep in their pockets. So again, I, I'm, I'm open to any marriage of these ideas. I'm, I'm, I'm open to, I think, I think that's part of what we're discussing here. I think that's, that's what this body should be doing, taking the committee work and then putting it, putting it out there and crafting something that we find acceptable and appropriate. And, and, and again, one, one aspect of, of the Pittner proposal, again, we could have came up with better names for these, but the Pittner proposal was that that, that license and that, that credit is transferable so that if someone did want to get out of the industry or they want to will it to their children, that is transferable to, to another person until that, there's that expiration date.
Okay. Alderman Fuller?
Thank you. Just real quick, and, and let me be clear, something Paul quoted me so eloquently earlier. I'm not opposed to getting rid of the cap. I'm not about stifling business in Minot. What I'm concerned with is doing the right thing by the 39 people out there that have paid for these licenses and making sure they are made whole. Because somebody who paid $200,000 for a license whenever it was, giving them $125,000 back does not make them whole. So that's my concern, right? Doing the right thing by the community and, and the people that have already invested here and not worrying about the ones that are gonna invest, I'm fine with that. But taking care of the people that built their businesses and have paid hard, hard cash for some of those licenses.
Alderman, bless him.
Yeah, and then just, just to, just kind of follow up on that, Rob, I, I think that is, should be our biggest concern, but the one thing that would come to my mind is when they bought that upfront, whatever deal they had to make to get it at, let's say, 210, they had no guarantee what the future sale would be. And, and, and actually back to what Paul was kind of getting at, the last five have not been that. One of the five was, and there may have been some special circumstances there. So, so I, you know, for me, I look at this and the list that we've got in front of us here, number two, as Paul said, is, is a real possibility down the road, is that there's just nothing. This council has the power to do that. For me, this is a good faith effort to make it as right as we can. And that's, for me, this is making sense, you know, I want to give it some more time before our next readings. But to me, this is making sense. The one question I do have for the city attorney, and I, I don't remember ever hearing this at our level, but I know at the state level, they actually have rules and law that they cannot make direct payments to a citizen. Does the city have any issue with making the $25,000 payment? We can forego fees, I'm assuming, by ordinance, but in terms of actually making that payment, do we have any issues in the law over something like that?
So this would probably be looked in the purview of being a settlement agreement if we were to make such a payment.
Okay.
To that, to that point, Alderman Pittner? One, one caveat, again, that, that we want to be sure is clear, there is a risk of the city being sued. And that's why in my proposal, I, I, I made it clear that there would need to be a, a signing and a release of all claims against the city. Because again, I think this has to be a good faith conversation between license holders and the city saying, hey, we're moving this thing forward together, this is what we're offering, but we're not gonna offer it to you if, if you're just gonna turn around and sue us and then you lose a lawsuit and then you get this in the end anyway. This is, this is something that we're, we're trying to mitigate the risk for citizens and taxpayers to have to go through that process. So, so again, and, and just, Rob, to your point, I, I agree. Making people whole is, is, as much as we can, right? Like, like, like Alderman Blessam said, you bought it at 210, now it's only worth 125. I mean, that, that, I, I get it, that's, that's just where we're at. That's, that's the market value. That's where that stock is sitting. And there's also individuals that, through our conversations and through our research, they were essentially gifted licenses because they were outside of the city limits, and then through the, the work of the census, they were inside city limits, so they just counted against the cap. You know, so again, there's, there's some individuals that are gonna make out really well on this. So, you know, because they had a fifteen-hundred-dollar county license, and all of a sudden, they're inside the city between, you know, nineteen ninety and two thousand, and oh wow, now I got an asset, it's an asset that's worth a hundred and twenty-five thousand bucks. So again, I, it's, 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 it's an imperfect science. It's an imperfect year. This is, this to me was a lot of hard work and dedication from staff, from, from, from the, the committee members, and I want to thank all the committee members that, that, that were here. They would love nothing better to pass one of these resolutions and have that committee dissolved, um, and, 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 and move past this issue, so.
Alderman, bless him.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to, just to be clear where we're at, and, and Steph or Harold, you can let us know where we are. This is not our first reading, right? So, um, are you, are you looking for a, a motion on direction, or do we have what we need for direction, I think?
That, that, there was not an intention to have a motion in, to go in a particular direction tonight. This is to be informational and, uh, that we, as a council, acquaint ourselves with what the committee had come up with, um, maybe revisit what we got from outside council and be sure we're aware of that. And then, at the next go-around, then we get into taking action.
I would also say, um, for all license holders that maybe couldn't be here or, or would like to reach out, council members have their email addresses on the city website. You can send me any comments that you have about the ordinance changes. I will get it to them. Um, I know that a couple people provided things. There's paper copies up here. They'll be attached to the agenda. Um, city staff worked really hard. Steph probably the most out of everybody, but, um, if there's any recommendations or changes, or things you have questions on, please reach out to us. This is a huge ordinance. And if, if we can make the proper changes now, now is the time to do it, on any aspect of it.
Just one final thought, and I think, Mark, you put it really eloquently, that this was meant to be informative, because this is one of those situations where government working really slow is actually a good thing, because it gives, you know, some of us that were, some of the individuals that were a part of this conversation in the past, you know, not to be prisoners of that moment and, and, and those discussions, and, and can look to the progress that we've made and the healthy discussions that we've had. It gives opportunity for, for license holders or citizens to come and talk to, talk, talk to us, reach out to us, give us their thoughts, give us their concerns. Um, and again, I, this is, this is just, um, this is an opportunity, in my opinion, for, for Minot to actually be um, a leader in, in, in economic development, in, in policy, because someone else might take this, this legal opinion that we got and might apply it to their community. And we just paid the bill, so.
Oh, um, city attorney.
Oh, sorry. And I just wanted to state another, um, make another statement for the public and everyone else, that like, the overall goal when we put together this outline of this ordinance, um, was to improve readability and try to make them more streamlined and user-friendly for citizens. That was our overall goal with everything outside of, of the cap conversation. That's kind of its own issue in itself. Um, so if you see anything in there that you think could be formatted better, um, I didn't spend a lot of time on formatting, because our time's kind of at a premium, um, but we'll fix all of the numbering, all of the spacing, all of that stuff, once we bring it back for a final reading before everyone, so please don't spend too much time being critical about the formatting. I know that, that part is a mess, but, um, if you see anything that you think could be ordered differently, or if you have questions about, um, applicability with state law, I'm happy to go over that with you or your council too.
Okay, thank you, city attorney. Alderman Samson.
Thank you. Um, I'm leaning towards one, but that's just because I'm trying to wrap my head around all the rest of this. Um, I can't get anywhere where we do a transfer. If we're gonna do this, where somebody can transfer their license. This is a one-time thing. And the other thing that I cannot get past is an upfront twenty-five thousand dollars. I just, I can't get there. I know we're not gonna make them whole, and the, to even think that we can get to a hundred thousand dollars, to me, is not realistic. There's a lot of, and I don't know how many of them would be out of the thirty-one that have been here for a long time that have made money off of these. It's also an asset that they depreciate. So I just, I, I can't get to, to that part of it, and then to do all of this and make it transferable so that you still, somebody else is gonna get the, the end game of that money, I just, I can't get there with that.
Paul?
Again, and, and, and maybe, maybe, maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding, Scott, I just wanna, so again, the, the, the credit is transferable, so if someone passes away, they can give it to their kid, and then, and then that expires, no matter what. All of those legacy licenses will expire at, at some point in time.
That's, that's the part I can't, I can't get past.
Okay. I remember from the last time we were trying to grapple with this, getting from where we were with license holders and caps to no caps was the hard part. And I think the discussion has borne out that we're still grappling with that same, how do we do that issue? So, give this, give this, uh, good thought, and when we come back to it, we'll have to figure out which way we want to go.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, just a one final thing right along those lines. I think when we do come back, I guess what I would ask is that let's, let's plan a hearing. Let's plan to have, um, some of the owners come and talk and, and others in the community, because I think, I think, it, you know, and I'll, I'll invite them, please reach out to me. I have talked to some. I've been very clear with the owners that I talked to that my starting point was removing the cap. So let's figure out how we make it work for you once we do. That's where I've been all along, and I'll continue to be there until something changes that, but, um, I think it's important to hear from them so that the public hears the full debate. We're gonna have our debate for sure, but I think we want to hear from them as well, if we can plan that.
That's a reasonable, reasonable approach. Okay, uh, Alderman Olson.
Uh, thank you. One other brief question for Alderman Pitner. Was there conversation related to keeping a cap but extending the cap? Adding another ten licenses, adding another fifteen. Was that ever considered?
Um, in response to that, yes, in, in, in some varieties, there were, there was discussions on creating new license types and, and then extending those, opening those back out to the free market. The problem with that, in, in, in the, in the opinion of the committee and the consensus that we came to, is that we're kicking the can down the road. Eventually, we run into this, and we just pass the burden on to the next generation that will eventually be dealing with. There's no more licenses, there's such a high barrier to entry, and, and, and again, to, to, to us, that was counterproductive.
Well, appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Okay. With that, uh, we'll move on. Item ten. Um, liaison reports, we'll start with Alderman Fuller.
Uh, I only had one this last month, and that was the Ward County Planning Commission. Um, we were still discussing the ordinances for anybody that wants to know.
Uh, that's the one that I have too. And we actually did vote to move it forward to the county commission. We have one more vote, and then it will go to them, so. And a public hearing, so we'll see how that goes.
We, we wish you well. Paul?
Uh, thank you, Renaissance Zone, uh, updates from Renaissance Zone as far as uh, taking some of the advice or some of the, some of the conversation from the Economic Development Committee. We talk about moving blocks around, trying to be more proactive with those blocks, um, as well as some potential updates to some of the other programs that we administer, such as facade and program guidelines, cost share, uh, on behalf between the city and, and property owner. Um, our, obviously liquor license, uh, uh, ordinance, uh, review. I think we had a healthy, uh, dose of what we've been talking about there, and, uh, that's all I got.
Alderman, bless him.
Yeah, so, um, I had the meeting for the commission on aging, got another one, um, this coming Friday. Uh, one of the things that they're watching very closely is what's going on at the federal level, um, in terms of their funding, as well as at the state level, and um, la- latest update that we got actually was, was, was positive in that regard, that the state level um, was looking good, sort of regardless of what the federal government might do. Um, you know, just such a, a wonderful way, and, and the good news is, is that the, the local part of it that we do through the city is a small part of what they do. It sort of edges them over the top, um, on most things, and, uh, and they're able to provide some great services with what they do. So, um, there was that. Nine-one-one committee doesn't meet again until June. And then, um, Paul alluded to the Economic Development Committee. We are, uh, we're in the process now of developing our primary recommendations to bring back to council. Um, we're taking off this week. We'll pick up again on the ninth of May. I, I would expect us, you know, depends on where the discussion goes, but it could, you know, I would think, um, probably before July one, we'll be back at council with, with, uh, recommendations, would be my thought.
Thank you, Alderman Olson.
Uh, thank you. So my list is long. Uh, March twenty-first, made a presentation to the Economic Development Committee on behalf of the Committee on Childcare. March twenty-seventh, attended the Central Dakota MPO meeting. March thirty-first, childcare committee met to discuss the childcare tax exemption that we've talked a lot about this evening. Um, April second, participated in an RFQ interview with engineering staff. April eighth, attended the quarterly Service Base and Planning Council Executive Board meeting. On the ninth, attended the Minot Police Department Promotion Ceremony. On April eleventh, served as a judge at the MAC EDC-sponsored Live Civics Be, that was the first ever held in North Dakota. Um, on the fourteenth, participated in a discussion with options with childcare directors and various church staff, again, about the resolution that we've already discussed. And on the fifteenth, attended the quarterly Dakota College of Botno Advisory Board meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, the liaison committee meeting for, uh, that was to take place this month was canceled, and we have our MPO meeting coming up next week, so, um, that will round us out. Uh, with that, we're on number eleven.
Uh, before you adjourn, one, one comment that I've had stirring in my head that maybe I will regret even saying out loud. I am one hundred percent behind allowing the public their opportunity to speak to us, and I'm glad that people feel that they can. That is a right that citizens have, and I am not trying to squelch that in any way, shape, or form. However, on rough count, I think that there were at least ten very inaccurate statements made tonight. And we don't really have the ability to correct them, nor do our staff have the ability to refute any of the statements that are being made, and that makes me feel very uncomfortable, because that's all the rest of the listening audience hears. So I would encourage anyone that is concerned with statements that are made to reach out, to get answers to questions, look into something that you think is bothersome, um, or troubling, and get accurate information.
Okay.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Moving second, we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here.